I call to order a regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Phil, do you have your roll call?
Chairperson Bob McCall.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Lisa Ritchie.
Here.
Commissioners Phyllis Harden here.
Thanks.
Dave Harper.
Yes.
Jerry Melia.
Here.
Dan Miller. Jason Reese. Anthony Stewart.
Here.
Steve Woody.
Here.
Planner Stephen Williams.
Here.
Attorney Dan Hart.
Here.
I am guessing we have no public comment on agenda or non-agenda items. Consent agenda or non-agenda items. And then, let's see, minutes. All we had in our packet were the October 20th.
No, November 5th.
Minutes. So, two sets on November 5th. So, I'll entertain a motion to do those. We'll hold the October 29th until the next meeting. All right, we have a motion from...
I'll second that.
Second from Stewart. All in favor that can vote on this swing vote. Yep. And one of the states. the Plan Development Amendment STCPDA. Do we have proof of publication? And do we know that, excellent. I think that's it, and I guess I'll open that public hearing. Right? And...
You can just, you can just note that concurrently you're opening up the other...
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, we do want to know that this, that we do have another public hearing that's being continued this evening, and so we're just going to treat tonight as though we're kind of one hearing. We'll go through and then vote on, in order, on the PD amendment, and the plat, and then the two FDPs. Call it a night. Sound good? Get all that done in 15 minutes. Great.
I'll talk fast.
All right, so, staff, presentation?
Yes. Phyllis, can you kill that light? Thank you. Stephen Williams, town staff. Tonight's PC discussion includes a PD amendment, as well as a continuation of the discussion of the proposed plat and FTP applications for the Morgan Ranch development application in downtown Superior. Because PC heard the presentations on the plat and the final development plans, the focus of this presentation will be on the PD amendment, which generally impact the portions of Block 6, 9, and 10, as well as the southeast corner of Parcel K, illustrated in purple on this slide. Staff is also prepared to revisit the variance requests in other areas of each application where additional direction from Planning Commission was requested within the associated staff memos, and then outline the recommended conditions to address the remaining issues. Chase Mullin, our 3D imaging consultant, is also in attendance. If the model is needed, has our representatives for the applicant, Morgan Ranch. The existing PD is illustrated here. The land uses that are proposed to be updated are highlighted on the right. PD changes are limited to portions of Block 5, 6, 9, and 10, in addition to that southeast corner of Parcel K. As illustrated, the primary land use designation for the area, which you see in this kind of candy cane blue striping, is flex space, which allows for commercial residential live-work, as well as hotel civic and education uses. This zoning designations allows any mix of these uses to occur on the property regardless of the floor level. Other zoning designations that apply to this development include: commercial, ground floor commercial with flex space above, plaza promenade zoning, and flex space with a live-work residential restriction along Main Street ground floor levels. Commercial zoning is shown in red, and it currently applies to Block 4. It is also proposed to apply to the new Lot 3, Block 7, as well. Flex space with a live-work residential restriction applies to portions, it's fainter blue, but it applies to portions of Block 5, this western half of Block 6, the western half of Block 9, and then the northern, or the western half of Block 10, excuse me, and then the northern half of Block 9. And this is where residential uses on the ground floor are limited to 25%. Ground floor commercial zoning applies along the promenade, both north of it within Block 7, and on the southeast corner of Block 6, and then on the east side of Block 10, and all of Block 11. So this slide juxtaposes the current PD use designation within, against the proposed designation. So the existing zoning's on the left, and the proposed zoning's on the right. Before we get into the proposed zoning updates, it's important to understand that part of the change is in the definition of flex space. So the former, or the existing definition is, is shown here on the left, and it reads here that it's not allowed within, it's kind of murky, not allowed within 25% of the Main Street ground floor frontage built as live-work. So we're proposing to update the language, and, as you guys, you know, know from the previous FTP reports, the flex space with residential restriction, what we're proposing to do is limit what can be done within this designated area. So it's the same hatching, it just has a different definition, and we're going to limit those uses to typologies A and L. Typology A being essentially apartments over retail, and then typology L is the new typology that they're introducing. We'll get into that in more detail later, but essentially it's apartments over, over live-work units. So we either have apartments that occur over retail, or we have apartments that occur over their very distinct new live-work description that we're going to get into in more detail here in a second. As illustrated on the right, the southern edge of Block 5, and the internal portions of Block 9, 6, 9, and 10, those are the ones that are proposed to be, so the other thing is we're basically changing the designation. So instead of having all of Block 9 as that live-work use, we're designating the corners for the ground floor commercial, doing the same thing on Block 6, and on Block 10. So internally, those live-work units will be allowed within these blocks, and we're reserving the corners for ground floor commercial uses. Nothing's changing on Block 11. We are making one distinction here. So they originally came in, and, you know, we had to do this kind of quickly with the civic use, and realized that they also had to have residential allowance above it. So they were proposing a civic use with flex space above, but it's more appropriate to just have a flex space here, because we have other civic space designations, and we don't allow flex space above them. There would just be straight civic uses, and those occur within Park 1 and the Central Park that's proposed south of the Sports Stable. So this zoning will go back to this straight kind of flex space, which is consistent with what they're proposing for the southeast corner as well, which will allow for their clubhouse and leasing center. And then the last change to this map is for that commercial zoning to allow for the development on Lot 3, Block 7.
Question to the, there was also, we were, there was only an allowance to put any street-facing commercial, or I'm sorry, street-facing live-work, that that would have to be a commercial use if it were facing the street?
Right, we'll get into that here in a second.
You'll touch that in a second.
Yeah.
Square footage and all that.
Yep. So, we're just going to go in kind of block by block, just dial in a little bit closer. This is the area that's proposed for the civic space. This is just, you know, a quick illustration of what that's going to look like. This is the area that's zoned, or going to be proposed for the clubhouse. We just colored it differently, but it doesn't, these zoning designations will be the same. And then this is that live-work allowance, and this would allow for, for both retail to occur underneath, and for the live-work allowance to occur in this location. And this is strictly commercial on the ground floor. And then, these are those live-work units. So I've colored these just so that you can kind of tell the difference between, the purple is, is the, the work portion, and the yellow is the living portion. And then this is a blow up of, of that floor plan, so you can see it a little bit better. What they're proposing is to reserve the ground floor area adjacent to Main Street. So on Block 6, it'll be on the southern portion of this, and then when we get it to the south side of Main Street, you'll see them flip-flopped. But all of these units are roughly the same size, so they have, you know, equal width bays and, and the same depth as well, and that's shown here. The difference between these and the ones we're going to see for Block 9 and 10 are that the floor height for Block 6 is such that it allows for a mezzanine. So you have the mezzanine floor plan up here, and you can see this is the, the main, main floor level, which would allow for a kitchen, stairs, and then a public bath, which is required for that commercial space in the front. And then moving to the upstairs, the main floor would retain that full building height at 20 some feet, and then you would have space for a bedroom and a private bath on the upper level. So that's what's proposed for the live-work possibility on Block 5. And then moving south of Main Street, this again is what we're looking at for Block 9. One of the big distinctions that I want to make sure everybody's clear about is that nothing changes on the exterior. This building looks more or less the same regardless, it's an internal, you know, tenant finish essentially, in order to create the live-work units within the, the structure that they're proposing. These units are, are shown here. There's six possible within Block 6, or within Block 9, and this is the, the floor distribution proposed. It's still about 400 square feet along Main Street that would be dedicated to the work portion of this use, and then the back half, all at one level, is shown to the south. And then this is a, just an enlargement of that, so you can see that there's an addition, same kind of situation where you have a publicly accessible bathroom, and then you have a door that gets into the, the more private residence in the back, includes a bedroom, and then kitchen, living area off the rear. The other difference here, I guess, is that those units on Block 6 are only accessible from Main Street, because the parking garage is at the back. So users, regardless of whether or not they're coming in for the commercial use or the residential use, will come in off of Main Street, whereas the units on Blocks 9 and 10 have both front and rear entrances. And then Block 10 is just slightly different. It's a little bit wider, so it allows for seven, up to seven potential units internally to be converted to that live-work use. But otherwise, that same floor plan applies, because these bays are the same, same width and same depth. So the definition that they're proposing is outlined here. Staff has related that there's some additional specificity that we'd like to see, just so that we can control this use a little bit more. This is kind of a catch-all to address both the flex apartments above and the live-work unit on the ground. I just think that there needs to be some specification that the residential units above the ground floor are a certain size range, and the residential units on the ground floor are a certain size range. They, if, you know, I, I think that what Ranch is asking for is to be able to potentially combine two, and have a bigger live-work unit on the ground floor, should that demand be there. But, because what we're not, we're not seeing two bedrooms in any of these floor plans that we've seen, they would have to combine two of those bays to do that. And I just, I mean, we don't have a lot of experience with this, but I'd have some reservation about too many of those units being combined any larger than two bays, just because of the activation. You know, you have more activation if you have more businesses on the street than you have if it's just one or two businesses, because the likelihood of them all being open at the same time, or, you know, if one of them, if it's three bays, that makes sense. If there's three bays and it's one business and it's closed, then that whole stretch is not active. So, we were asking for additional clarification on that, and also asking for a guarantee that, and, and they've suggested that it's there, but I would rather have stronger language that guarantees that that front space is entirely work-related and can't be used for the residential use. And we, we talked about this before, but this is a request from Morgan Ranch to control that through the lease, leasing, their lease agreements. And so, it's, it's a, we're kind of giving up that authority or whatever, and we just probably want some more specificity in order to ensure that that occurs, the, just so that we, I mean, this is our only chance to kind of see the parameters in place for that. So that's the only issue, I guess, we have, or the only kind of suggested conditions, and we'll get to that here in a second. But the other change is for Lot 3, or it says Lot 1, but it's really Lot 3, Block 7. And this is for this kind of iconic, you know, commercial building to be in this location. This is some, you know, just kind of an issue with the PD where we actually have a plaza zoning for this. It's a commercial use, so I feel like it's more appropriate to have a commercial designation. Through all of the conversations we've had recently on this development, I think Ranch Capital has shown that, you know, they plan for development here and commercial development, and I think that, you know, good planning suggests that activating this corner is a, is a good idea. So this is more kind of a cleanup item in order to make sure that it, and we're doing the PD anyway, so I just feel like it's more appropriate to zone it commercial. This will, otherwise, it would seem that the Metro District, who owns the plaza and the promenade and will maintain it, would also have to own this commercial building, and there's, there's not that interest. So, they would rather have that be available to be leased out to a private entity, and this, this does that a lot more cleanly than keeping it zoned, Plaza Promenade. So the conditions that you had in your original resolution were A through C, and we're suggesting D and E, basically, to kind of clean up the civic use designation on Block 6, to zone that just as flex space, and then to add that additional language regarding the live-work dimensions, and also ensuring that 100% of ground floor within the work areas on Main Street is designated as live-work. Do you guys have questions, or want to discuss any of that more?
I had some general questions that they're probably, it's appropriate for you as for the applicant. So, so the, what's in front of us now does not include, in your opinion, an effective language for a minimum space running?
The typology, I just think it needs to be a little bit more dialed in, yeah.
Amount of beat in this.
But it works in conjunction with their exhibits, but their exhibits aren't really part of their FTP. Their exhibits are just shown what, how they want to be able to convert those to live-work, and, you know, Bill has clarified already that that's a backup option anyway. And it's mostly for the financing component, but should this actually occur, we want to make sure it's dialed in, in order to, to control it properly.
And do you have any recommended language to do that?
Um, I mean, I, I guess I was kind of kicking it back to the applicant in order to have that done, you know, and maybe the, the language on the D should, or on E, I guess, should be that it gets done before the town board meeting on the night.
Okay.
But, I, we just have to go look at it a little bit more closely and dial in their square footages, and they may be able to tell you that off the cuff. They're, what, roughly 700 or 900 square feet tops for those live-work units?
Hi, good evening, Bill Jenks, RC Superior. Actually, Morgan Ranch, DTS, I'm sorry, both. So, the, the idea here was just because this is a PD amendment, we're trying to, we've had a lot of issues with these design typologies, these residential typologies throughout every application that comes in, so we're trying to create a typology that has some flexibility, basically just for the sake of having flexibility. It, it, within the Morgan Ranch DTS project and the FTP as proposed, our live-work units total, what's the, what's the size range? Terry, do you know on?
Do some quick math.
We'll do some quick math. They assert, they're, they're probably, you're right, within probably between a minimum of roughly 700 to maybe around 1,000 feet for the bigger ones with the, with the loft added, so certainly not, not anywhere near the 2,500 square foot max here. Again, we were just trying to put some buffers on either side for, you know, unforeseen changes or, or issues that come up with that. We have no issue with, with the idea of making sure there's workspace in the front, and that it's at least 400 square feet, and that it is used for work, for work functions. We will write into all of our residential leases. If this ever happened, anyone who leased a live-work space would sign a lease that guaranteed they had a commercial use to put in that space, and that they would have it open a certain number of hours, and that they would use it appropriately. So, we have no issue clarifying the language. I think Stephen and our team can work together on that, and I don't see any problem there.
The one thing that just occurred to me is I guess we could set a minimum depth. I mean, because if you're with changes to two, then we'd need to go from 400 to 800 or whatever. And if we kept that 20-foot depth, which I think is the minimum on your, each of your live-work products, then that would, that would control that.
Okay. Is everybody, everybody okay with them handling that?
Are you proposing then, from like a memorialization of this, like a note on the FTP, something in the development agreement?
Get it actually into this description?
No, you have to be in the PD of this.
Oh, sorry, PD.
Yeah.
To amend this language on the PD for it?
Yeah.
Okay. So it would be on the actual, not just through the lease agreement, but...
That's right, yeah. This would be in the PD as a typology.
Yeah. Okay. And I was curious, can, can, is there any other commercial opportunity besides the first floor in these, in, in any of these areas? I mean, it just sort of popped into my head the, earlier today, that, I mean, a lot of, a lot of downtowns with multi floors, I mean, you end up with a, an office on the second floor that's, you know, maybe even not, doesn't need storefront. Is that opportunity available in any of these buildings, or is it purely residential?
Purely residential, and there's a couple of reasons for that. We, we did look at an earlier iteration of the plan that actually had a second story or potentially even a third story over the Block 7 retail building on the plaza. The problem with that is it is parking. You have to find somewhere to park it, which in that case, you either have to do another parking structure on Block 7, which it completely changes the whole, the whole site plan.
Okay.
You know, for, for this project, because, and from another standpoint, every time you add an asset class or a different type of use to a project, it gets harder and harder to finance, because now, not only do you need someone who's willing to finance a residential retail project, you need someone who's willing to finance a residential retail office project, and that gets harder and harder and harder. So, we do see, from RC Superior's standpoint, additional office uses coming in in a major way on Blocks 2 and 8, to, to fill in that use and create that daytime activation for the whole project in, in general, and benefit from the shared parking synergies that that creates. But they would be sort of standalone office-focused uses on those blocks at the west end of the, of the site, rather than trying to pack it all into a vertical mixed-use project on these blocks.
Okay. And then our land use for home-based business, I assume, applies throughout this district as well? I mean, if you want to have home-based businesses in there, that's fine.
Yep.
Can you help me understand the 25% in, in these work, the, the maximum 25% residential use? Just help me a little bit with the math. Because I don't feel like we're losing much commercial in this.
Well, I mean...
In this change.
So the, kind of why we arrived at what we arrived at was, you know, we started with looking at what you'd actually get on the more conservative way of interpreting this, which is how staff interpreted it, which was that it was a 25% allowance for residential on the ground floor in, you know, this kind of western portion of the development. And that gets you around 7,000 square feet of residential allowance on this floor, and kind of...
Across a total of how much, roughly?
It was, I think that was about, I, I can't remember. This is 19,000 square feet on the ground level, so we didn't calculate it for Block 5. So this was, this is 19,000, and if you kind of split those two, you know, that's an additional, it's not quite 19,000, but, so 38,000, and you get 7,000 square feet of, of residential.
A permitted residential on the first floor.
A permitted residential.
And the rest is required to be commercial?
The rest would be required to be commercial. So what we're kind of exchanging here is, we're, we're guaranteeing commercial corners.
Sure.
And then when you split out the live-work from the, if you split up the work from the live portion of the live-work use, it's about 10,000 square feet. So they're, they're really only asking for, you know, roughly 4,000 square foot difference, a bump of 4,000 square feet. So even though, when we presented it to you, it's a 21,000 square foot reduction from the, the pure 73,000 square feet of, of commercial space, the, you, when you add back in that 10,000 square feet of, of workspace, it's not that big of a, a change from that 7,000 that, that they, and, and we're getting guaranteed commercial floor at, at, along the street frontage, whereas you could have a residential use there under that 25% allowance, so.
So from a market perspective, I appreciate that, Stephen, that's really helpful to understand the math. I'm wondering, from a viability perspective, you feel that moving them into all the corners rather than kind of consolidating it as shown, is, to me, it almost feels more restrictive to kind of set these, you know, required locations, rather than to give you all some flexibility, but maybe you could kind of explain your thoughts there?
Yeah, I mean, generally, retail, any retailer is going to prefer the corner, the end cap of a, of a building, and so those are going to lease easier than the inline units that are, that are, you know, stacked in the middle of the building that have just the, just the front, frontage. And so it makes some sense to, to, to call the corners commercial. It, I agree with you, it is less flexible than the new PD, and that's, I think, part of what we're giving up in exchange for making a more, a more reasonable plan that, that works and, and works from a design standpoint. So, you know, we're, we're saying, because we have building designs now, and we're ready to actually build this thing, as opposed to, the original PD was flexible, who knows what's going to happen, let's try to aim for a target. Now we have a real plan, and we say we can build these buildings, or, you know, we, as you know, we wanted to turn more of it into live-work to be able to protect the downside even further, but we met at, at the sort of halfway point. If we're, if we're going to be required to say any of this has to be commercial, the first place that should go is the corners of the buildings where it's easiest to lease. And, and that's, that's really the, the intent here, is just to match our current plans that have these buildings with these inline spaces that make sense, and where we can plug in.
And so it makes some sense to, to, to call the corners commercial. I agree with you, it is less flexible than the new PD. And that's, I think, part of what we're giving up in exchange for making a more, a more reasonable plan that, that works and it works from a design standpoint. So, you know, we're, we're saying, because we have building designs now and we're ready to actually build this thing as opposed to, the original PD was flexible, who knows what's going to happen, let's try to aim for a target. Now we have a real plan and we say we can build these buildings. Or, you know, we, as you know, we wanted to turn more of it into live work to be able to protect the downside even further, but we met at, at the sort of halfway point. If we're, if we're going to be required to say any of this has to be commercial, the first place that should go is the corners of the buildings where it's easiest to lease. And, and that's, that's really the, the intent here is just to match our current plans that have these buildings with these inline spaces that make sense and where we can plug in. You know, we, we have only two floor plans for potential live work units. It's an inline plan that goes in those south buildings and it's an inline plan that goes in that north building. And that keeps it pretty simple too, so we can say, you know, this is where these, these plug in with our current building plans and, and leave the corners for potential commercial. So it's really just an attempt to kind of, kind of cement things now that we're closer to being able to build and, and get the approvals that we need for the FDP.
And I, I just, I'm just going to beat the horse a little bit more to make sure. I know there are a lot of, you know, people that live in that area are concerned about commercial. I'm, I'm feeling like there's a pretty, that looks better than what I was expecting and what we started with. But just, just to reiterate for the public and even for our own understanding. So these, these live work areas that exist in here, they, you're only permitted to have 25% of that space on the first floor to be residential space.
In the existing plan.
Yeah, I'm sorry, in.
In, in the new plan, this whole area would be a live work unit, the front 400 square feet of it has to be work.
There's not an additional.
There's no, there's not an additional 25%.
So there's no 25% restriction here, it's just that the entire, the 20, the, so the.
That, that entire area.
The facing 20, the facing, street, yeah, the street facing units require, so that's 20 feet by, I mean, there's, there's some, what is that number? Do we know that number?
Each unit's about 20 foot wide by 60 foot deep.
Okay, so that's, so 1,200 square foot per unit, that is, that will have to be commercial.
Well, the front, in, in the new zoning, so the typology L in the new PD spells out this, this units allowed here.
Right.
The whole area can be live work units, but a live work unit by definition has to have at least 400 square feet of commercial space across the entire frontage. So the whole frontage of. That's right.
It's 20 by 20?
400 square feet would be 20 by 20. And, and you can see that, the, actually, are these?
This is the.
Oh, here you go.
Block six, so it's a little deeper.
So, so block six is, is the, the sort of loft style, but you have this workspace at the frontage, which takes up the entire commercial frontage, looks like a commercial storefront, 12-foot tall signage, lighting, and commercial storefront door. And you have a, a minimum, per the typology, a minimum 400 square foot. These ones are actually a little bit bigger, 19 four by 22, plus the kitchen sort of ties into that space. And then on these units, you actually come up this stair to a loft on the second floor, which is the bedroom that overlooks that, that ground floor workspace. So the, then going back to the other plan, Stephen, if you don't mind.
So, well, and going back to that, I did have a question on that, that just real quick since we're there. This, with the one with the kitchen where.
Oh, you want to go back to that?
This is the.
Uh, yeah, that was, so is this potentially a commercial kitchen if this is a, you know, even if it's a small lunch shop or something like that?
It's, it's a kitchen.
Designed to be the residential kitchen or also potentially both, both commercially and really?
It's, it's, it's the kitchen, you know, like most of these spaces, if it goes live work, would, would likely be either like a boutique that wouldn't necessarily use the kitchen for the work function.
Understood.
Or it could be like a professional office for an architect or insurance agent who, you know, they have the kitchen sort of like as you typically see a little professional office kitchen with the coffee and everything and use it for that in the daytime and you use it for your residential kitchen when you're, when you're being a resident.
Okay, keep going, yep.
And then you go to that, go to the other, this one, yeah, exactly. So this is the, the units that would fit into those buildings on the south side of Main Street. Again, you can see the required 400 square foot workspace, taking the entire frontage. This would be Main Street here. So again, commercial storefront, commercial storefront door, minimum 400 square foot workspace. And then these just have a, a wall, they have a public bathroom because you have to have the public bathroom to serve that workspace. But then you have a wall to get back into the live function that actually faces the south side of the building. And so on, on all of these areas, going back to the site plan now, Stephen, if you don't mind. And so part of what we're doing is, th- this language is difficult to understand. You know, the residential use is not allowed within 25% of Main Street ground floor frontage, which means it is allowed within 75%, but then built as live work, like the whole thing, you know, is it 25% can be built? It wasn't, it's not clear. And so we're trying to fix that so that it is clear for both of our sakes. And so we're taking away that, that, that question mark and saying, okay, we'll guarantee that these corners are commercial because that makes sense. We're going to say in some scenario, the entire entirety of the area, you know, shown in blue here, shown in blue here and shown in blue here, could be these live work units. But those live work units have to have commercial space across the entire frontage that's at least 400 square feet per, per unit. And that just makes it a lot clearer and easier to understand and easier to implement moving, moving forward. And again, you know.
You don't want to do that, you want it to be commercial, I mean, yeah, I know.
We, I, I gave you the numbers, I think you guys have seen them, but we, we can mark two commercial rents here down to half of market rates and be economically better off or equal to.
Than doing residential.
The option of building it out as residential and leasing it as residential. So, you know, i- in that case, if we drop, if we, if we go out to lease this thing and they're not leasing, we're going to drop rents by at least a third before we even consider the live work option. And they will definitely lease at a 30% discount to market rates. I mean, you know, I, I really don't see this being the, the outcome. It's, again, it's just, it's just functionality to provide some kind of flexibility and provide some revenue in the case that retail just doesn't exist at all in the world anymore, which I do not think is going to happen.
And remind me in your phasing plan, I know it's not necessarily tied to the PD, but from a market viability perspective, you're building from east to west, right? So you'll know how that commercial's doing on block 11 to give you a better idea as you're developing permit plans for 10 and nine then?
Yeah, the, the phasing plan generally, so we, we hope to start construction by the end of first quarter next year. Start with building six, 10 and 11 and the, like 75% of the plaza facing Main Street, which that whole sort of piece of the project would deliver about 14 months later. So that's talking about summer of 2021. And to your point, yes, these, these commercial spaces on block six, 10 and 11 will all deliver first in that, in that timeframe. We'll be working on leasing them, we're, we're working on leasing them now.
Does that, does that include K in the plaza or?
It, it includes like 75% of the plaza back to, sort of back to that crescent walkway that you've seen on the plans.
Is the intent though to also build that cool, whatever that's going to be?
The little thing in the corner?
Yeah.
As soon as, that, as soon as we have.
As soon as you have somebody who will take it, you'll build it.
Because that, that building's so kind of custom and interesting that we, we see that being pretty flexible for.
Is that single use you think or multiple?
Probably single use.
Okay.
You know, it could be sort of the multiple use where it's a, if it's a daytime and nighttime, like a smoothie shop and a wine bar that sort of share the same space. It could be a, a single use, we don't know, but we know it's going to be sort of custom and cool. And so we, we really want to find a tenant to help us understand how they want to use the space before we commit to, to building that out. So that, depending on, you know, if we find a tenant in the next six months, that'll deliver at the same time the rest of it does. If we don't, it'll probably be, probably follow by however long it takes.
Okay.
Mr. Jenks, if your contingent plan comes into play, town staff may have mentioned about if a tenant came in and wanted to combine two or three units and how that could shut down an entire block. What's your feeling about that?
Well, in the, so from a retail standpoint, that can happen anyway. We very well may find a 5,000 square foot restaurant. I mean, restaurants generally are sort of 3,500 to 6,000 these days. And so in those cases, we absolutely will take two or three 1,200 square foot spaces, put them together and that becomes a single restaurant. And that's very typical for any retail center to have that sort of flexibility in demising. You know, you've got, you've got enough distance here that even if, you're really, in, in this kind of a, kind of a product with a 60-foot depth and sort of the inline retail configuration that this is, you're probably not going to find any tenants that are more than like 6,000 square feet. Because once you get into the 10 and 15,000 square foot sort of junior anchors or junior boxes, they usually want like 100 to 150-foot depth and it's a totally different building type. So I, I don't think we'll find anybody here who's more than 6,000 square feet.
So Bill, just to clarify, it's only, my only concern was for the live work units being combined into.
Right, which the depth takes care of that, right?
I think the, the anchor units, the end cap units would occupy a restaurant or, or a more attractive. What we're talking about is the in-between units that could go to live work, where you may have an architect who has six associates and he needs that extra space.
I mean, well, in, in that case, in that case, that, that sounds like a big enough business that they just lease a commercial space. They don't need a live work space.
I guess the question is, are you willing to put a cap on it to only combine two or something like that?
Yeah, no, I think the 2,500 square foot max already does that. There are 1,200 square foot spaces each, two of them would be 24.
So how's, what's your feeling about capping it at two?
You mean like single use, like?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like one, one architect comes in and wants to occupy two units and they're going to lease two units from you and they're going to combine them.
And they're doing it because they want a three-bedroom or two-bedroom and three-bedroom behind it.
Right, because they have, they need the space.
And they want, and they want the, the space, but they want the lift behind it, okay. Hang on, Commissioner Harp, let's forget this question.
What's, what's your feeling about that, about limiting them to two?
Well, I guess there's sort of two, two questions there that, so the one, so our, the proposed language in the typology already limits a live work unit sized to 2,500 square foot. So we wouldn't be able to combine more than two because it would be more than 2,500 square foot. They're, they're 1,200 square foot each, so you're already, that, that's already, you know, limited there.
All right.
That's your biggest one though, what's your smallest one?
Small, right.
Live, live work unit. Those are two different sizes.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
1,100, 1,100.
2,200.
Okay.
So we're still right.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
Unless we start demising the interior differently, where you, you know, like use two and a half or something. So I just feel like.
If, if, if this ever happened, we would just build them out like this as single, as one-bedroom units that are 20-foot wide all matching. They're not, you're not, you know.
I'm just concerned about.
Well, and if that's the case, then we just need to clarify the language because I think you have up to two or three bedrooms or whatever and that isn't what we're reflecting here, it's a one-bedroom kind of live work product.
I mean, I'd like to keep the flexibility if we can, so that, so that we can say we could do a two-bedroom that's up to 2,500 square foot, just in the case that, whatever, I mean, for flexibility. But certainly, certainly that already limits us to only combining two.
Yeah, limiting, capping it at 2,500 feet.
Yeah.
Limits to, Commissioner Harp, I'm good.
This is more of the avoidance of doubt question. Are these spaces also available for just work? Like, could you put a dental office in one or something like that?
Yeah, that's.
We're, we're going to start by building it out as just commercial space with no live work. It's just commercial space that's 60-foot deep. And, and that, yeah, those will lease to professional offices, dentists, insurance agents, flower shops, boutiques, restaurants. I mean, the whole, we, we're going to try to fill all of the space with full commercial use like that. This only comes into play if it's three years from now and we haven't found a single retailer to lease any of the space, which it's not going to happen, but you know, that's, so yes, yes.
Do we still have that delay on there? I know we, no, so the delay is gone where you have to hold, okay.
Right, there's no provision.
So what, I mean, what if somebody does come along and just, just says, oh yeah, I, I do want to do live work? Are you going to say no to that initially or will you?
They'd have to pay. They'd have to pay an exorbitantly high rate to be able to match what we would get from a normal commercial lease.
So if they're, if they're willing to pay a full commercial rate for the space and they only want 400 square feet in front, then you're good with that, so, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So it could happen, but it would be pretty expensive for somebody to do it.
Yep.
Question on the two-story, what block has the two-story residential with commercial in front?
Six.
So can that, can that also be two-story commercial?
Yeah, well, as part of the tenant improvements in any of the commercial spaces, so all of our commercial spaces, I think, are minimum 15-foot clear, kind of 15 to 20-foot clear. In a 20-foot or 21-foot clear commercial space, if a commercial tenant wants to, they can build in a mezzanine for additional seating or storage or what.
Well, I've just seen, yeah, some clothing shops you go in, they have stairs, you go up to it upstairs just because they want the space. So that, that whole space is available to.
That would be part of the tenant improvement for that, for that retailer.
Okay.
It's, it's more a function of just how, how tall the spaces and whether it fits and how it all works, but.
Any other questions on, so is this the primary change then to, I mean, we're just looking at adding this typology to? Is that our PD amendment?
Typology and changing the zoning designations as we went over in the map.
Yep, okay.
And I would like to, if possible, go back to that a little bit. I understand that there is a request for zoning change in, I think it's parcel K.
Yeah, that's the commercial, to commercial, yeah.
Yeah, and I'd like to hear more about that. I know, Stephen, you talked some about that, but can you maybe go over that again for me?
Sure. So they've, they have a massing allowance within parcel, parcel K as it is for up to 25 feet height within the plaza area and 15 within the promenade. So construction within this area or improvements within this area is contemplated. But to have a commercial use, I think it's just cleaner to have it zoned commercially. And that's, they want it as a separate parcel so that they can actually, you know, sell it off or have separate ownership, because the metro district will own and maintain the plaza and the promenade. The metro district's not a commercial business owner, so this just cleans, kind of keeps it a little bit cleaner and more distinct and it's just more appropriate to have it zoned commercial than to have it stick with the plaza zoning designation, so.
So that does make sense. However, if we change that, do we also change the style of building that is proposed there? Or does it become open to whatever kind of building you'd like to put there?
No, the PD, or the FDP, excuse me, clarifies what's actually proposed at this location and it's reflected here. So although this is a plat item, I, I just gave you the context of what the site plan is and what the actual development plan is for this. If, if they wanted to change that in the future, they have to come back and amend the, the FDP.
Yeah, and clarify that's just because of the separate, separate approval processes. The PD just makes a very general allowance for commercial use here, which would be any commercial building. The FDP proposes a specific building for that site, which you're also, you know, considering for approval and so you, you know what's going to go there via that FDP application.
So I do understand that, I just wanted to be clear that what we are looking at later.
Correct.
Will be something that we can approve now for that building.
Yes. And overall, from a planning perspective, I mean, we want this area to be active and having commercial uses around the outside of it, you know, to the south, it's all commercial. You're going to have active elements along the promenade to the west. But then you're going to have three sides of commercial here, between the south, the, the east and the north, activating that plaza area, which I think is critical and always kind of part of the vision. It's just, it's just one of those things where I don't think the, the PD really thought through everything because it was just such a big application to, to look at, so.
Any other questions on the PD?
Could you talk more about the leasing center? I know we've spent a lot of time talking about the live work, but the rationale, and I guess, it sounds like staff is comfortable, you're recommending approval of this switch here.
Do you have that other rendering by any chance with the, where it's lit up?
Where it's lit up?
Yeah.
I have the.
It just looks nicer to talk about.
I think we have a FDP still out.
And I know we've got the illustration up and to Commissioner Ritchie's point, do you, do you have any, do you know what the inside's going to look like, do you have any plans for the inside?
We do.
It's, it's a lot of space, I don't know how much space you need for leasing.
It's not just a leasing office, we, we keep calling it a leasing center, it's not a leasing center. It's, it's, it's got a co-working space amenity, it's got, you know, lounge and lobby type amenity and then it does have some, some private offices both to manage the commercial project for a project manager, property manager and to manage the, the residential uses.
Talking about this one or something in your presentation?
Now, the, the other one in the presentation, if you go to the.
Is this, this isn't affected by the PD though, right? We're not, we're not making any recommended changes for the leasing space, right? Just for the civic space or is that included in the PD?
No, it's included.
The PD extends flex space to that corner.
So we, instead of being a ground floor commercial, which is what it's.
Is it currently, we're looking to change that to the typology?
Just flex.
The new flex typology?
Not the new flex typology.
Just flex.
Flex space, so that it can allow for their use and then it can also allow for the civic use to the north, which is what was presented to Planning Commission and the Town Board at the concept meeting in April.
And is that in here, I'm sorry, I'm just not, I'm.
It's in there, yeah.
Okay. Let me see.
The TP and PC presentation there, Stephen, you just had.
Land use plan.
This guy.
It wouldn't be in here.
There wouldn't be a condition on there, because it's on the plan.
Okay, okay. So it's not an amendment? I thought it was an amendment though.
It is, but it's shown on the plan not as a condition.
Okay.
It's addressed through the PD, it's not, I think it.
See, isn't that a nicer rendering?
What's that?
See, see all that time we took?
Totally worth it. So, so this, this does act as the, the lobby and this is really the hub of the entire three-hundred-and-eighty-two unit residential project that spans all the way from block nine, ten, eleven up through the, the other blocks.
So what, what kind of hours of operation would that be open?
Basically twenty-four seven, I'm not sure, my, my doors might lock at night for safety, but basically open at all times.
Can you access the residential units in that building through that entrance?
Via an elevator that goes into the hallway, isn't it, up into the, yes. So, so that, yeah, it will be the front door for this building for people to get into that elevator. There's a pool deck at the roof here, which is a huge amenity for the entire project, which, again, you come through these doors up that elevator and on the pool deck. There's a fitness center on the second floor here with these, these windows that look out onto the plaza, which you'll have, you know, it'll be lit up all the time. You'll have people on velotons in there riding away. It's gonna create this real vibrant activation on that corner that we think is so important to, again, you know, keep, part, the biggest part of place making to me is sort of forcing people to activate these spaces. And this is part of that, is, is having this big thirty-foot tall lantern, it's always gonna be lit up with the activity and fitness happening in here all the time. Co-working space here with people, you know, working away all the time. The, the community space, the, the town alone over here, you know, hopefully with active programming all the time there, but all of the residents in this project are gonna regularly come through this door to use the, the main amenities that serve all of the residents, so. To us, having that at this, this critical corner to draw people down promenade from their apartments that are, you know, in those northern buildings. People are gonna walk down that promenade to get into the space and, and use the, the facilities here. It's just, it's just really important for activating that plaza. And from a business standpoint, obviously, it's also important for us to have a really easily accessible, attractive and, and sort of obvious front door to the project for, for new, unless he's looking to, to lease apartments, so that's, that also serves that function.
Is there a secondary entrance into that building from the street? I mean, there's a, an access through the garage, when you pull into the garage, you get to your unit through the garage. There a secondary unit or access in there?
There's a man door off of the, off of Marshall Road, sort of next to the garage entry that comes into the ground floor hallway in the back of the building, which you can get into the, there's another elevator at the catty corner end of the building. There's an access into the parking garage and ground floor at the north end of this building, sort of off of that pedestrian passeo at the north end of the, sort of the northwest corner of the promenade. So yeah, there are a couple other ways to get into the building, but if you come into these amenities as a res, as a resident in the project, you're not gonna wanna walk into that building and through the parking garage unless it's snowing or raining. You're gonna walk down the well-lit promenade, past the music and the plaza, past the restaurants and people to come into the front door here and, and up to where you're going, so.
Thanks.
From a market perspective, that looks like an awesome corner, right? Like, I can imagine that would be probably one of the premier corners for a commercial business to locate into. I mean, I understand that, and I agree with you in some sense that, you know, having that being a leasing center activates the space, but from a market perspective, it feels like we're missing out on an opportunity, because you could make, you know, one of those center portions or another part, you know, just as viable from a, from your leasing and missing this commercial opportunity here.
Yeah, so there's, there's a couple issues with that that we thought about when we were trying to decide where to, where to put this. You know, one, we really like this, this big two-story architectural treatment that's like well-lit, that's really cool, you know, we call it the lantern. This, this really awesome bright thing that, that activates this corner. Commercial spaces are basically guaranteed not to do that. I, I did this at another project in, in, in Mountain View called San Antonio Center, which was a similar mixed-use project, it was three-hundred apartments over about same kind of seventy thousand square feet of retail. And we had spaces, two spaces like this that were underneath the apartments on the corners. Sort of the hard corners facing the main road at, at access points. And, you know, we, we rendered them like this, thought they were gonna look great, built them like this with this two-story space, took out apartments just to make it look even cooler. And then we leased them, one of them went to a Starbucks and the other one went to a restaurant called Paul Martin's. And both of them, because retailers are retailers and they have their kind of standards and they don't really often think too far out of the box, came in, built a ceiling across this, this is just dark all the time. And they operate like a normal retailer, but it just doesn't look nearly as cool as this is gonna look with this awesome thirty-foot-high lit-up space with chandeliers and really high-quality finishes. And so, you know, I, I think from a, being able to control what happens here and being able to better activate the space, this does a better job than any retailer whatever deal. From a market standpoint, marketability and leaseability, can we go back to one of the site plans real fast? It's, it, it is a good corner, every corner's a good corner, but of all the corners, it's probably one of the less desirable just because it isn't wrapped by vehicle, by, by a street. Retailers like streets, they like traffic and they like parking. As, as cool as plazas are and as important to place making and, and the whole vision a, as it is, retailers don't love being on a plaza, they wanna be right next to parking, they wanna be right next to cars driving by, and so they prefer having a true corner, like any of these other corners, where you have two streets meeting at an intersection with parking on both sides. They also like being on the corners that face the main access of the project. So cars that are coming into the project are either gonna come, come off McCaslin in here, so this corner is probably one of the most leasable as well as these two corners that face that sort of entry to the project, and then, you know, this corner is, is also good. And then, you know, alternatively, people are gonna come down Marshall, which again, this is sort of the entry retail corner to the project, along with sort of these, these two. And so from a marketability, leaseability standpoint, from a retail perspective, this is actually one of the least desirable corners, even though from a sort of layperson perspective, it's the most desirable because it's on this great plaza. That's why it makes the most sense to put this really cool residential amenity and project amenity here that we can control, that is the hub of the project, that's drawing all this pedestrian traffic all the time and really activating that corner of the plaza as, as sort of the barbell to this, this private use over here. Which is also, you know, again, a great corner because it's on Superior and Main Street, so. We, we put a lot of thought into where that went. As, as you know, we originally showed it back here before we had this, this building changed. And we did have commercial sort of across this, this frontage at that point. But when we, with, with the Town Board's recommendations in April, when we made this change to add the parking structure and add the civic space where our prior leasing office had been, we just moved the leasing out, out to that corner. Which made the most sense from all those standpoints.
You mentioned shared workspace in there as well?
Yeah.
How much of that area is shared workspace?
Probably twenty-five hundred square feet, something like that, is that right?
Yeah, maybe less.
Maybe a little less than two, two thousand square feet somewhere in there. It's, it's a, in a small amenity intended for residents, people to have some.
So it's not leasable or, or it's just for tenants to command and sit?
Yeah, it's, it's got, it's got, I think, one large sort of co-working community table and then it's got like a couple of phone rooms and a couple of small conference areas for people to, like, it's sort of the upgraded business center that you would typically see in an apartment complex, but it's, you know, more aimed at the sort of new way of thinking about that, which is this co-working concept.
Okay. Any other questions on the PD amendment? Yes.
So if we approve this change, are we saying it basically can't be commercial space on that corner?
No.
No, flex, flex space still allows commercial.
It will still allow commercial, but if we're gonna change your mind and wanted to move the civic center back or something like that?
The flex space is the most flexible zoning that would allow their, their proposed use as well as ground floor commercial.
So you're suggesting if we wanted to give up the civic space, could it be turned to commercial?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, gotcha. Can't imagine, but yes, it could be.
There was a lot of arguments, if there was, if there was a lot of, I mean, there's already some pushback, if there was a lot of pushback about having leasing, sorry, the clubhouse on the corner.
Well, and it's private, so it's theirs, they, they'd have to wanna move it, but.
Sure.
So Dan, I know we talked about maybe doing these all together, but it sort of feels at this point that it might be appropriate to do the PD amendment if we're all okay with where it's at and then maybe have discussion, although I can ask for public comment on the PD.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna, if you feel you wanna kind of proceed that way, yeah, would you just take public comment?
It just feels like a very distinctive.
I think that's fine.
Piece to this, and then.
Yeah.
Yeah, get that done, get it out of the way and then we'll, we'll just, the, the FDP, we've kind of been over a couple of times.
Right.
Probably have a few more comments and questions, but.
Yeah, yeah, and then kind of after doing that, just kind of indicate that, you know, we're, we're working on the continued public.
Okay.
Hearing concerning the FDPs and.
Alright, so what I'll do then, I mean, it, it is a single hearing, so I'm gonna go ahead and accept, I might probably take two rounds of public comment, but if, if you wanna comment on the whole project now, that's fine, however, however, I'm not gonna require you to wait till we talk about the FDP to comment on that, but if, if there are, if there's any public comment on what you've heard so far, feel free to, to come up and make that comment now, if you, if you'd like to come up later after we do the FDP process. I'll, and, and you've heard more, then I'll, I'll take public comment again a little bit later this evening, so. If you could just give us your name and address, that would be.
Yeah, hi, my name's Dylan Beeson, I live at four-one-seven Promenade and representing myself and my wife Stacy. Can we, first of all, I liked what you had to say about the leasing center, you sold me on it. A lot of the neighbors don't think it's a good idea to have it there, but you made some good points. Is there a way to go back to the picture of the leasing center? I just wanna, I wanna make a comment that architecturally and design-wise, I think it looks fantastic. That one, yeah. The, the, the white and white clavering white brick with the horizontal Brazilian walnut that E Bay I think looks super smart and if we could do more of that, that would be fantastic. We live in the townhomes and it's a shame because I think that the earth tones and the, the darker, not the darkest brick, but kind of the mid-range brick has already aged out, so. I'm very intrigued, I just got back from Playa Vista in LA and they've done a lot of projects like this, it seems like they finished up two or three years ago and design-wise, architecturally, they're very, very smart and seeing this, I, I, I love what this looks like. That being said, if that's gonna be a design center, or excuse me, a clubhouse, is there any way to move that into something like that into another corner? Do we have enough of that going on is what I'm asking?
And probably need to have you address the commission, they can respond later to your comments, so you're welcome to.
Is there, is there a way to have more of that and speaking from an activation standpoint, a building like that, I'm envisioning a, a two-story wine bar, a restaurant with rooftop. I think it's vital that we have as much rooftop as we can. We, most of us live with rooftop decks. Talk about activation, we have tons of neighbors and friends over and, and have parties up on the rooftop, so as much rooftop dining as we can have would, would be fantastic. Yeah, I, I, so I'm, I'm also representing the forty neighbors that signed the consensus statement yesterday that my wife read at last night's meeting. I think that's all, all I have to say about that area. I think it will activate, that my neighbors disagree with what I'm saying, but I, I like it and you sold me on it and I, I think I could talk to them about it. Can we go to this amendment to live-work? So I understand where you all are coming from, I understand the idea that there may be a necessity to mitigate and, and change things if things don't sell. Is there a way we could look at the map of block ten and eleven? I, I think if we're looking at activation, which I, I love, I think we as a neighborhood and a community can activate like there's no tomorrow, if there's the appropriate businesses. Activation for me, I think of Charleston, South Carolina, they revitalized King Street and it's super, it's beautiful, it has restaurants, bars, ice cream shops. If you wanna activate, then looking at block eleven and block ten, as much restaurant and retail boutiques, galleries as possible that are well-lit at night, that you can walk from one to the next would be the best. If you're switching that to a live-work with only a four-hundred-foot frontage, when I walk in Boulder at night, I'm enthusiastic about restaurants and retail. When I see a guy writing code at seven o'clock at night in a dimly lit front of a work-live place, it's depressing to me. And I think if there were restaurants, you would get a lot more activation, livability, walkability, bikeability. If we really, really concentrate on leasing those out to a larger restaurant space. And, and finally, I wanna understand, live-work, does that mean in that four-hundred-square-foot frontage that we have a lower revenue producing sandwich shop or somebody that is, are they able to have a, a beef jerky store or a little t-shirt boutique? Or a Nepalese tchotchke store? I think we have to really be careful and thoughtful about how big of a space we want on that vital. That's such a key part of the project for activation, so. That's what we as neighbors have been talking about and thinking about and we just have one shot with this, one opportunity, and I think it's a great responsibility and a great opportunity to make this such an activated, livable, beautiful place.
Cool.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dylan. Any other public comment at this time? And, do you wanna respond to that now or do you wanna, oh, I'm sorry, we have one more, yeah, come on up, yeah.
Hi, my name is April Burt and I live at five-thirty-five Promenade. My question is, and I probably missed this, quarter four, we're saying that quarter four of 2020 will start breaking ground, did I miss that date or is that the actual date that was stated?
For this project?
Quarter one of 2020.
Quarter, yes, quarter one, start date, yeah.
Thanks for clarifying that. And then spring of 2020 was something? Fourteen months afterwards, okay. And the, the comment that we'll drop the lease by one-third in order to lease as commercial space, is there a, what's the criteria there? If we don't lease within six months, one year, what, is there, is it just we could drop the, the lease by one-third in order to promote commercial space?
And I can let the applicant respond later, if you, if you, yeah, if you just have your question, we'll keep that.
And then the twenty-by-sixty space, that's, that's all of the live-work space and that's for both smaller units, all units are twenty-by-sixty, is that correct? And four-hundred square feet of that will be commercial?
Again, I'll, I'll let Bill respond to that in just a moment, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, it just seems like a very small space for certain types of commercial to occupy that. So I'm just concerned that we might be limiting ourselves with just a twenty-by-sixty space to a certain type of business in that, in that area, so I was just curious about what the, what the experience is there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Uh, one more, yeah.
Stacy Beeson, four-one-seven Promenade. I'm still trying to wrap my head around the leasing office center and I know you're basing it on two experiences that you've had. But I still think it's a feature of the plaza and I, I am picturing that our residents are mainly using that area to enter their residence, places of residence, so I, I would still, I'm still not convinced that that, it, it's a beautiful building, but for it to be the hub of where specific residents leave and enter, it just seems more limiting that way.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alright. And Bill, do you wanna, if, if you could speak to, you know, maybe, maybe going back over the, the desire of the, the the commercial space versus the fallback position, all those, I know you've gone over it a couple of times, but.
No problem.
I wanna make sure it's really clear.
So first of all, I, I wanna say thank you to, to our downtown Superior residents for coming out. It's so exciting to see you get involved and to see you here. You know, I've been working on this project for, for four years and we have been, you know, building your homes for the last four years, so it's, it's great to see you guys coming out and getting involved and and I, I'd love to get more involved with you and, and be a part of your meetings as much as you want me to, so let's, let's connect offline, but to respond to some of the comments, so the, I'm gonna go back in, in order, so the rooftop dining, absolutely, we, we totally agree. Can we go look just at the site plan, one of the color site plans? And we totally agree, rooftop. We totally agree rooftop dining is is great and we want to encourage it. We do, actually, maybe the rendering of the of the leasing office first, the leasing lobby.
Oh.
So to to activate Main Street, which I'm pretty excited about, we do have residential rooftop uses along on the top of these retail stores. So these will have really large residential decks for those apartments that come out to Main Street and you'll have umbrellas and furniture out there and people having wine and whatever. And that kind of activates Main Street from both levels, both levels, the ground floor with the with the residential or with the commercial space and the second level with residents kind of overlooking eyes on the street, activation, you know, all the place making techniques that that we love to employ. As as far as rooftop dining, it's difficult in these mixed use buildings, obviously, because there's already residential units built on top of those those commercial spaces. But where we do have, now go to the site plan, please. Where we do have the single story retail, that's actually part of the reason we have the single story retail here and here and here is to provide that flexibility. So any retailer who, you know, wants to have the retail, the rooftop dining amenity and wants those views can certainly do that and we can work with them to to make that happen. It it is a pretty expensive option for anybody who wants to do it. And so it really comes down to the retailer and whether they want to pay for that or and they think it's worth worth it to their business or not. We are sort of building in the rooftop dining into this smaller building, as you've seen in those those renderings of that that, you know, the kite building. And and that's on purpose. It's to sort of force at least one of these tenants to have that rooftop experience and really look over the plaza, look over what's happening in the in the stage in the park here and create that two story activation here. We'd love to see another rooftop deck at this end of this building if we can find the rent tenant who who wants to do that and who can afford to do it. We've also talked about potential rooftop dining or or mezzanine patios on on this building that would overlook the the park here and provide sort of a two story dining experience there. So we're providing as much flexibility as we can to accommodate rooftop dining. We're definitely a proponent of it and we'd love to see more of it. We're going to force it to happen here and and we'll work with our our retail tenants and restaurants to to see what we can do and and make that happen as much as possible.
How do you handle that? So let's take that one on the southern end of block six there that you were pointing out. If if they wanted rooftop dining, would that require some structure on top?
This?
Yeah. I mean, you know, and I I envision the Waterloo right to walk up and you've got some inside and then you've got outside rooftop. What happens in a building like this if that's desired?
Yeah, it's a good question. So on on, I'm sorry, excuse me, this building in particular, you'd likely have a have a new elevator and sort of a small elevator, you know, clubhouse, penthouse thing that would come up along with a stair that would provide access to the rooftop, but you wouldn't have much sort of enclosed space up there. It would really be an open rooftop deck. Those those rooftop decks do require a little bit of structural reinforcement in the in the roof of the building. And so it's something, you know, if we do it, it's something we're going to want to have a tenant in the next six to twelve months.
You're going to want that built built to see.
Yeah, so that we can so that we can incorporate those things. You could retrofit a building to to make it work. If you're just doing a a a walkable rooftop deck, it doesn't add a whole lot of additional weight to the building, so it's definitely doable. But there, you know, there are challenges and it's, like I said, it's it's not a cheap thing to do. So it's it requires a tenant who has that that business volume and that vision to be able to to do that, so.
And does our code allow for, I mean, if they do want some cover structure? I mean, some of these rooftop decks have not necessarily a structural roof, but you know, they'll have poles up with shade and rain protection and things like that. Do, is that permitted in?
Uh, it'd be through the building code in terms of changes and then we'd have to look at it for height. But for the blocks in question, well, at least the block on seven, the development on seven, the height is there. This structure code has proposed just under the thirty two foot height allowance, so they would have to design that differently in order to allow for access up to that without exceeding the height limitation.
All right.
And then on this building, we we are talking about potentially doing, because this building's relatively tall as it is, the the proposed shell is something like thirty five feet tall, just to provide that that anchor at the end of Promenade and provide that sort of focal point for the park. We can pretty easily fit a mezzanine level in there that would have potentially some outdoors part of that mezzanine that spills out sort of like a second floor patio, but it's within that overall shell that we're already proposing with the FDP. So we're we're definitely looking at rooftop dining and we love it and we'll try to make it happen as much as possible, but it's really up to the tenants. On the questions about the lease rate drop and talking about live work floor plans and illustrating how those spaces can work, can we zoom in just on one of these buildings just to see the demising? So what I was saying, and it's really just an attempt to show you, you know, we or any property owner in our place is going to obviously do whatever's in in their best interest from an economic standpoint, and that's just obviously the case. I I gave Stephen some numbers for illustration, but based on existing retail comps in this corridor and the cost to build these spaces out, we could drop the lease rate on a commercial space by half and still be economically better off than the option of converting it into live work, spending the money to build it out as live work and collecting what we think we could collect in rents for that live workspace. So what I was saying with the with the potential one third drop is just from a practical standpoint, if we build these shells out and they're vacant in a year or so, obviously, we're saying, well, we have a problem here. We we're building a bunch of space that we're not leasing. The first way to fix that is to lower prices, obviously. Everything sells at a price. And so we would likely start dropping the the listing rents of these spaces by, you know, at first ten percent and then twenty percent and then thirty percent and then forty percent. And what I'm saying is we could get down to fifty percent before we it makes any sense for anybody to start considering this live work option because that's the sort of break even point from a market standpoint where live work starts to be as economically attractive as 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 leasing this out is fifty percent of of market rates for commercials, so.
And and we're doing this for the reason of financial?
It it's it's for the lenders. It's it's just to, lenders are worried about the retail marketplace. They want to build a three hundred and eighty unit apartment complex with no retail. And we say we can't do that. We have to build this retail. But here's some answers, you know, here's some solutions that prove that even if retail never leases and every retail, every retailer dies, which again is not going to happen, but even if that happens, we have an answer for you and this project's not going to go into bankruptcy. And that's that's what this this whole live work discussion is about. It's it's really just a necessary exercise for us to to show them that. So then, and there was some question, I think, about the the functionality of a twenty by sixty foot space. So as you can see here, maybe zoom in a little bit more on this building just so everyone can see it. The the spaces, and this is typical of any or every commercial mixed use project I've ever worked on, the spaces are shown in their smallest demising option. There's actually another wall here that's not shown, but basically we're showing as many small spaces as we can potentially build. And so this is the maximum number of tenants. This is the smallest space you can rent. If you're a commercial tenant, you want to come come lease a space, we're going to say, okay, you can lease as small as, I think this is probably like an eight hundred square foot space, if you're a small tenant and that's what you're looking for. Now, if you're a thirty five hundred square foot restaurant, we say, oh, here, we've got a great corner for you that's thirty five hundred square feet and we just combine these three spaces together. And so that's that's on purpose. There are some some slab breaks about every other wall on these buildings because the grade is dropping off as you go down Main Street. And so there's about a four to six inch slab break every other wall, which makes that combining a little bit more difficult. And we just have to keep that in mind when we're leasing spaces and playing that puzzle piece game. But but the idea is, except for, you know, here, this is the the residential entry to this building, so that's a fixed door with a residential lobby and elevators, that's obviously going to be stuck where it is. So this space doesn't have any room to expand beyond what this is shown at, something like thirty five hundred square feet, probably four thousand square feet. But all of these spaces, depending on the tenants that we get that are interested, can be combined in any number of configurations to accommodate different sized tenants. So, you know, while we certainly could lease a space to a twenty by sixty foot store, that is a typical retail configuration. Sixty foot depth is basically the standard prototype retail depth across all national brands and and most retailers. And so a twenty foot by sixty foot depth is a twelve hundred square foot space. That would be the typical sort of Verizon store or some of those uses. You know, we also have the ability to combine those together, make a twenty four hundred square foot space that's forty by sixty or three of them together and make a space that's sixty by sixty. So.
I think that, does that answer most of the questions? Awesome, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any questions come up since that, or anybody? Anybody? I, that's, we had an additional condition, I think that we were, and so now, well, I'm going to leave, I'm going to leave this whole hearing open, so I'm not going to close this, but we'll go ahead and vote on this a minute and I'll entertain a motion in a moment. There was a couple of clarifications or at least one condition, which I think we addressed, which was setting the minimum depth.
Two conditions that are on the board now.
Thank you.
The first one is the the changing of the zoning for the the civic space area just to be flexed, to allow for the civic space plus the residential above. We've talked about that with the applicant. There's no issue there. It's just a clean up item. And then the the second E has been discussed in more depth tonight and it seems like we're all in agreement that we'll just clarify, make some language clarifications before the town board meeting to ensure that a hundred percent ground floor along Main Street is the work use and to just clarify how work units or live work units can be combined. But it looks like that language is is already there, but we we'll just dial it in.
Okay, so our, I think our expectation is that it'll probably be something like that twenty foot minimum, but we're, let's not put that in the condition. Let staff work that out so that the language is, I think we're on the same page, so we'll just make sure they work that out.
Okay.
Head nods everywhere? Good, all right. Anybody want to take a stab at this?
So why don't we do this kind of procedurally? Why don't you just close the public hearing as to the.
To the PD?
PD amendment and then open it for discussion and then then set it to.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's probably the best way to handle it.
All right. Okay, so I'm going to, sure I have my terminology right? All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing or reviewing and commenting on the the PD amendment, STC, PDA number five. And then I'll take discussion and then we can, I think we've already had our discussion, but if there's any more discussion?
I'd just like to go on record, I guess, you know, obviously encouraging you guys to do your very best to fill this with, you know, really vibrant uses, but I do appreciate the time that you took to work with staff to come with a compromise. I think that feels pretty workable, feels more market supported, feels executable and maybe a lot less kind of nebulous than we had this first time around. So appreciate staff and applicant working together on however that shook out.
Ditto here, thank you.
Yes, I I would agree with that. And with a project of this this size and scope, you know, it can be probably a little bit overwhelming if you try to digest this whole thing. So I'm glad that that staff and the applicant were able to work together to help us figure out how we needed to approach this and clarifying that there did need to be an amendment to the PD to make this happen. So I, you know, feel pretty good about the direction that we're headed in and where we are right now.
Mr. Malia, do you have something else?
I just wanted to add a comment that Commissioner Ritchie is correct, this is an immense amount of information and changes that were unexpected. And to have staff work with the applicant and help us figure this out so that we can all understand it because it is extremely complex in the details, but not so complex in the theory and that this is a contingency plan. You know, leasing this out at commercial rates is tremendously more beneficial, absolutely. But having this contingency plan in place for the financing purposes for the lenders, I I understand that. The devil's in the details. We don't want to have dark blocks like Stephen had mentioned where we combine too many units and they may close at a certain hour and then, you know, half the block is dead because nobody's there. You don't want that, we don't want that. So just to to reiterate, it's a, these changes we're making are for a contingency plan. This is not the first plan. This is not the first step. This is in case the market slips away. Thank you both for working together.
All right, anybody want to take a stab at a motion on this? PD? Our exceptions are up on the board.
I move to approve resolution number, resolution number five, series number twenty nineteen, recommending approval of a fifth amendment to the planned development plan for Superior Town Center, case number PDA dash twenty nineteen dash one, with conditions as proposed by staff.
That's a motion by Commissioner Ritchie.
I'd second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Malia. All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous? All right, so we still have a public hearing that's still open that we're continuing for two FDPs that started a few weeks ago, so we'll continue, I guess, kind of loop back around as staff.
Yeah, I'll, I'll continue with the presentation and and try to get us through what we've already heard and seen. So I basically just pulled up the conditions that we've discussed or that you've seen for the plat, the and the two FDPs, and then also highlighted where variances are necessary or where staff had requested additional direction from PC and then just summarized where I feel we're at and added conditions where I felt like we were necessary. So just to help facilitate the discussion as much as possible. So the plat was pretty straightforward. You know, we have to do the technical corrections that we've identified, pretty standard language. Same thing in terms of consistency between the FDP and the and the final marvelous for the plat for condition B. So this is what you saw to begin with. And then the final plat just needs to be recorded before either of the FDPs get recorded. The variance requests that were summarized in your staff memo are outlined here, one of which was the size of parcel K. I think that, you know, we've got our heads around how that's being reduced. And, you know, we originally started with a reduction down to twenty eight feet. They found a way to limit that reduction, so now the promenade width is going from forty five feet to thirty seven feet. And really that building to building separation remains greater than forty five feet. So my impression is that PC has not indicated any concern with this reduction. So it's just, you know, we've list all your, as part of the process, we list all the variance variance requests. The one thing that I do recall Commissioner Reese mentioning was just the concern about outdoor storage within those patio areas, particularly along the promenade. So it's something we consider as a potential FDP condition. I think Bill already related at a previous meeting that they would have conditions in their kind of covenants that would restrict those areas from not being tidy to begin with. But if we want to, we feel like it's necessary, we could look at an FDP condition for that. In terms of block length, I think this is kind of the the big one and and it's kind of multi-layered and nuanced. We've gotten into this, I think, in detail already, just whether or not if you don't have the mid block crossings and if you don't, you are exceeding those block length standards, then we're more concerned about access and the permeability of the site, the ability for buildings to orient towards streets, the ability of some of those other conditions to be met. So staff, you know, chatted with our legal team today and, you know, we we basically have two different options here, but the the preferred option would be to have public access easements over those sidewalks. So it's separate from the parking issue that we've also discussed. There's two kind of public access issues, but the parking issue will be addressed through a parking agreement that the town will have to approve to clarify how the shared parking works in practice. I think the the theory is there and the the basis that Walker Consultants has come up with is sound. We just have to have a little bit. is sound. We just have to have a little bit more detail flushed out in order for that to work. So what staff's really kind of focusing on here is just getting public access easements over those sidewalk areas to ensure that the public can go. And this is consistent with how we've had everything within downtown so far, but typically what's happened is you get an outlot that's plotted. The outlot goes to the Metro District. The Metro District maintains that all we're asking for here is a public access easement. So it would still be on the private lot if we just allow, ensure that the public can cross over those areas and those areas don't get privatized.
Is the applicant?
We'll get to whether, I didn't get a response from them today
All right.
on that particular issue. So that's staff's recommendation. You know, you guys can either agree, or, you know, if the applicant feels differently, you can look for an alternative, but that's where staff landed. Block length, so we would basically not have an issue with the orientation of if outlots or public access easements were established. So that kind of gets gets rid of that concern and the same thing in terms of building orientation. So that's part of the reason we're recommending this. I think that there, like I said, there's layers to this application or to the requirements of this proposal that are just more soundly met if these things are established and addressed. And then right-of-way changes. They're in the FDP for the, the details are in the FDP for the right-of-way, but the actual size of that right-of-way changes through the plat. And really, the changes are more or less limited to Creekview Drive, which is proposed to be widened. It's from 69 feet in certain locations to between 70 and 82 feet, and it's to allow for diagonal parking on both sides of the street. There's no concerns with that aspect of the request that have been identified either by staff or by planning commission. So basically, the one condition that we're recommending for the plat is that those public access easements be provided over sidewalk areas through Block 6, 7, 9, 10, and 11. And if we can go to a plan, if you guys need to look at those things again, and/or we can do that now, or I can kind of continue through, that's it for the plat. I have a similar summary for the right-of-way FDP, and then there's more. The plat and the right-of-way FDP are pretty straightforward. Then we get into the development FDP, and you can actually see how certain things fall off of those requirements and variances as well. So they're all related. Should we get the easements we need for the, or the easements we're requesting for the public access. So I can either keep going or we can stop and talk about this at this point.
I like smaller chunks.
Well, and it also seems that if the easement is critical to the other pieces, we should have that discussion.
Aubrey, you want to do it?
Yep. All right.
So we've had this discussion already. I'll just try to quickly summarize, but let me get to
Where are we at?
Stephen, I want to say I understand our interest in having an easement over the area. I'd like to hear again from RC Superior as to why. There's a reason you had. Just want to understand your reason better.
Thanks, yeah. So really, it's just, it's it's adding a huge complication in our mind for no reason and with no finding or basis in the underlying entitlements or property rights. There's, you know, the underlying PD you know, the PD that was plotted and then kind of governs this whole development project shows the proposed plat areas and developable areas and breaks them into public right-of-way, Metro District parcels, which are also open to the public, and private developable areas, private developable lots. And there's a square footage area in the PD for each of those categories. These blocks, the entirety of Block 9, 10, and 11, 6 in its entirety, and 7-1 and 7-2 are private developable lots. There's never been any indication of required public access easements or pathways or anything else through those properties. And public access easements materially impact the title and the vested title of the property ownership of these properties. So when we, it doesn't, whether there's a public access easement or not, doesn't change anything about the way that this will be developed or operate. We're not proposing putting any gates across these things or blocking them off or anything like that. It's going to be, it's going to operate the same way it would in either case with a public access easement or not. But if you put the public access easement across it, and we've already, we've agreed on the one, we've agreed to put one here because that is a wider separation, it's a cleaner separation, it's sort of a clearer separation between the Block 6 bigger building and these, you know, the smaller garden-style product, and it does kind of bifurcate the Block 6, which is otherwise a really large contiguous block. And so, you know, we were willing to negotiate, because we're going to meet in the middle and give on that. So with that, you have public access easement here, and you have Metro District ownership providing public access over the entire plaza and up through the promenade. So you have public access sort of in this T shape through the Block 6 and 7 already. If you start plating public access easements across here, across here, across down here, across here, across here, across here, the private property becomes a Swiss cheese of easements. And, you know, just like when you're buying your house or any other piece of property, we are someday, and whether it's 10 or 50 years, going to potentially sell this property, and it will be redeveloped in 50 to 100 years. Plating these easements across it materially impacts our ability to ultimately sell it and ultimately redevelop it, even though that's way down, you know, way in the future, we still have to think about those issues as we're developing it now. And to us, there's no basis for the request and there's no reason to do it. The, like I said, the property's going to operate the same way either way. This property is a mixed-use property. It does have retail uses, just like every other retail use. When you go to Safeway, you park in a private parking lot owned by that building owner and you walk across their private property to get into the Safeway, it feels like public public access because you're a member of the public and you're visiting the retailer. Same thing here. This is going to be a retail parking lot to support these retailers. We're going to have retail spaces on these blocks to support these retailers. It's going to operate. People are going to come and park there freely, and it's to support our retailers. We, as the property owner and the retail owner, are going to encourage that and encourage appropriate use and appropriate control for all of those different parking uses. And because it's a big mixed-use project with these, with the shared parking proposal, and we've done this before other places, it is an active management exercise, managing the parking assets for a project like this. And that's part of the importance of keeping them private and keeping control over those. If you put, start putting easements over it, now we lose some amount of control that we have to get the beneficiaries' consent to put a two-hour sign.
We're not asking for it over the parking. All I'm asking for is over the pathways. So I'm trying to be clear about that.
And that's good. That's a good start. And again, we're willing to do it here, but to add them through all of the other blocks where there's no requirement.
So we have shared parking, which is supposed to be public to some extent here, which still needs to be defined through that parking agreement. But you can't get out of your car and walk across a public access easement to get, this is a private area, so
You can walk across it. It's just not a public access easement.
We have this, we, so this is being treated differently than everything we've done in downtown Superior to date. So if you're a pedestrian going to, you know, the development to the south down here, you can go through any block on a public access easement on any sidewalk, and then all of a sudden you get here. And I'm, I've not been convinced as to why certain areas need to be privatized and certain areas don't. I mean, I think that as a pedestrian, you're going to think that you can walk right through here. And I don't, they say it's a liability concern. What I've heard is that if it's dedicated to the public, it's the town's liability and you know, we're immune from most liability issues. So I really just don't understand what the issue is and why we aren't getting it. I mean, he's given a different answer tonight than he gave at the last meetings in terms of selling this and having it, you know, cut up. We vacate easements all the time if a property gets redeveloped. So I just don't see that we've had a convincing argument against it, and I'm for consistency with what we've done to date within the development. And I think that this is the core area of downtown. It's going to be traversed by the public, and I would rather have an assurance that the public can be on those properties within those sidewalks, just as they would expect to be. So.
So we clearly have a bit of a disagreement.
Yeah, well, I would say sorry, Commissioner, but the rest of the development so far, Stephen, has been residential. There hasn't been a commercial component to it.
Right, commercial is arguably more public than residential.
Right.
But could you put up, I guess, if you wanted, could you put gates up to stop people from coming out of those parking lots or down the sidewalks? And if you sold this to someone in 10 years because you got a great offer, they could change their mind and they could do that if we don't have those easements? I know you don't want to sell it. I know it's going to be a great property, but
This is all kind of theoretical.
But it's theoretical for why we're not doing this.
It would all obviously be subject to, you know, to town code and the FDP in any case. You know, I don't think without some sort of and we're happy to, we're happy to come up with some sort of language in the FDP or whatever it takes to say that you can't put gates up there. There's no intent that, if you're a pedestrian, to Stephen's point, if you're coming from these southern blocks and walking across the public access easements and you get to this block, you're not going to be like, whoa, at the sidewalk crack because you know there's not a public access easement there. It's still open space. It's private, just like when you go, like I said, when you go to Safeway, you're on private property. You're not on a public access easement there, and you're walking across a private parking lot, across private sidewalks to get into that front door. It's the same thing here. This is, it's publicly accessible via its use as a retail center and commercial center. But you don't have to plat public easements everywhere just to have public access to places on private property.
But would we, I don't even know if this is legally possible, but if it's, if we flip this on the other side and say, what if we put language in there that we would vacate our easements if you wanted to redevelop this? I mean, does that solve your problem?
An easement by definitions and perpetuity, so you can't really do that. You could do some kind of a license instead, but that gets a little weird. Why? Why, I mean, why, A, you know, I don't see how you can potentially claim this as a requirement under any of the existing zoning or property rights that we have. The vested property rights are to develop the property. There's no requirement for any public access easement in any of the code language or any of the PD language. I don't see how you can make a finding that this is a requirement. And B, from a practical use standpoint, it's just negatively impacting the title of this property for no benefit. It's not making anything better for anybody. And so that's, you know, that's why.
So Commissioners, if I could kind of chime in here. So one of the things that we looked for, and this is certainly up to your you know, review and interpretation, is that Design Guidelines is 4.2B has some language in it that for blocks exceeding 300 feet in length, mid-block pedestrian pass-throughs or courtyards are encouraged to facilitate pedestrian activity. So, you know, that language in itself, you know, would be kind of up to how you interpret that, but you know, kind of the way, we would see that and the kind of the way it's been interpreted previously, as Stephen pointed out, is for, you know, pedestrian access easements. But I just kind of wanted to bring it to you. I mean, I guess the other kind of component of this that would make it kind of having private easements throughout the, I mean, I'm sorry, private sidewalks throughout the property is also going to be, you know, somewhat problematic in terms of enforcement for the town. I mean, essentially they would have private rights to these sidewalks, and then the town would be essentially, you know, if they brought up some kind of enforcement issue for trespass or something like those, that, along those lines. You know, the town would then be enforcing something on private sidewalks. I mean, I think kind of functionally, what I discussed with Stephen is that from kind of a functional perspective and then kind of looking at the design guidelines, seems to always suggest that public access easements are preferable and encouraged.
So I want to pause there, though, because the language, the language that you just quoted from the Design Guidelines said for blocks over 300 foot in length, pedestrian pass-throughs or courtyards are recommended. This is a pedestrian pass-through and a courtyard. It doesn't say public access easements are required. Those are very different things. We're providing, and the FDP proposes what the improvements are.
And that's true. I mean, it doesn't actually say public access easements. I think the way it's been interpreted in other applications is that public access easements are typically included. But again, that's up to the Commission's interpretation and whether it complies with these Design Guidelines.
So the other issue.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are we just talking about access through the middle of the blocks, or does this apply to the sidewalks around the edge of the blocks?
So that's right-of-way. So that, the sidewalks around the edges of the blocks are public.
So as proposed right now, without any change, all of the sidewalks around all of the streets are public right-of-way, so those are owned by the town already. The promenade, all the way down here, and the entire plaza is going to be dedicated to the Metro District, which is by definition, public access. And then we've agreed to provide a public access easement across private property here.
So which ones are we, are you actually in dispute about?
All the, everything else.
Stephen would like to add another one here, I believe, going through there, potentially, you want to hear? Or where do you want to?
I mean, every other application we've had where you see this purple dashes, we've had public access easements, and in this case, we have it in this location.
Which you can see how that cuts up a private property into 18 different pieces.
I still don't understand why we treat this application differently.
So this is a single property owner.
So I kind of think we're just rehashing the same arguments. I think we've heard them both, and I think we can probably talk about them, but I
Okay.
I think so. I mean, I haven't heard anything new yet. I did have a safety, fire and safety access question, though.
It was referred to the Fire District in terms of fire access. So fire access has to come down promenade in order to serve these buildings, and then the access can go through these areas as well. So we actually, it's probably a good point in terms of the plat. I'm not sure, I'd have to go back and check. I know that they have utility access easements through here, but they would also need fire access easements through here as well.
So that's a separate easement?
It's a separate easement. It needs to be established if it's not.
Okay, and that's not part of this process, though, right?
No, it would be part of the plat, ma'am. I will double-check.
All right. Do you have that? Do you know? And I assume you don't have a problem with that.
To the extent fire access easements are required by the Fire Department, obviously, we're going to provide those. That's no problem.
Okay.
And why are the, again, someone who's ignorant about easements, why is that easement different from a land title, from a title standpoint? If you have to give these easements, why is giving another five easements a big deal?
I think the fire easements are more easily explained to purchasers. You know, obviously, when you have multiple buildings and you need fire access, I would actually I would actually think that they probably don't need actual easements. Usually, the Fire Department will service private property without an easement, just given that you have accessibility to it, and you have a knockbox, and they don't have any gates and that kind of thing, that you have to coordinate with them on your building permit. That's part of the building permit review. They don't usually need a true easement either. If they require easements, obviously, we're going to have to provide those, you know, fire safety is obviously paramount.
Don't you provide easements, though, for like utilities and things like that? So there's easements all over that property, right?
Yeah.
I mean, so we're not, I mean, you keep on saying that it's going to impair the title, but I think again, and I don't know a lot about this, but it sure sounds like there's easements all over this thing, and yes, we're asking for a few more, it sounds like. But why are five more a big deal if you already?
It's a different type. So public access easement is just, it's a it's a different type. Utility easement is allowing a utility provider to put a wire under the ground. If the building goes away and gets redeveloped, obviously, that utility provider doesn't care about that wire under the ground, and they're going to vacate. If, you know, public access easement, on the other hand, if we provide a public access easement, which we're going to do in this area, and this property sells or redevelops or whatever happens, the town can say, no, we really like that pathway, and we're not willing to give it up, and that's probably what happens. And so that's a permanent, we're basically giving up ownership of this property to the town, and wherever we do that with the public access, we're like giving the same the same ownership away and the same issue. Utility easements, the fire access easements, and fires understand that. They're just, it's a different animal.
So the pedestrian access easement would be an agreement between the town and the developer to allow pedestrians to access.
Right, not the developer, but the owner of the property.
Right, the owner, right.
The owner of the property. So if that property is sold, the public access continues.
It's an easement to run with the land.
Right, and what he's saying is if if it's sold and they want to redevelop, they're going to have to go through a process with the town to do that regardless, but, you know, it's probably a much bigger deal. But, you know, it's it's probably a much bigger deal. But what he's saying is that the town basically, for all intents and purposes, has full rights on that that land and can prevent development over it and can require it to stay in place and.
Right, but it's the same type of argument that they're making for the development. They want the retail to work. We would want this to be successful, but as they get redeveloped, we'll vacate easements. It's a trust trust kind of situation in my mind.
Yeah. So I think, yeah, I was just mostly answering Steve's questions.
Compare apples to apples here. Um, if we look at a development like the Superior Marketplace, um, what type of easements do we have there and do they compare to what we are, what we're asking for here?
It's a different development in general, but, uh, we have certain access easements, cross-access easements, I know for sure. I haven't looked at the Superior Marketplace, but I know that Costco owns its own lot. You know, so they have their own access issues that they they address independently. Target owns its own lot, you know, and those areas are so overparked, you know, that they're not going to have the same kind of concerns that we're going to have in this location. Whereas, you know, like, it would be an issue for Target if all of a sudden Great Play started taking a fall of their parking. But that, you know, Target's parking doesn't always, so that's kind of, you know, it it's just two different things. I don't know that we have a apples to apples comparison for what we're trying to do in downtown Superior, uh, within our development.
So I've I've developed probably 20 commercial properties. About three of them were very similar to this, large mixed-use properties that had residential office, retail on like main streets, very public, very, none of them had this this issue. None of them had any public access easement across it. It's, it operates as a commercial center. If you look at the Grove in Los Angeles or any of these big mixed-use commercial centers, entertainment districts, they don't have public access easements all across them. Their design does.
On the flip side, I think there's quite a few that just have blanket public access easements over to allow public access on all sidewalks, parking lots, paved areas. I mean, I think that's also extremely common. So I don't know how long we want to keep debating this, but I'm inclined to just from a planning, I'm inclined to defer to staff and and legal on this one and and support.
Well, why don't we say we'll just we'll discuss that during during discussion. I think we've heard all sides. We're going to have to come up with a recommendation or not with that, so.
I've got one question about easements, but you mentioned the parking, Stephen, and that we have to have a parking agreement. Is that going to be part of our recommendation here or is that separate or?
It it's, um, it's listed as a condition, but it's going to get wrapped into the development agreement is what's going to happen, so.
Okay.
So moving.
All right, we'll move on.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the right-of-way FDP had these four conditions as part of the the staff recommendation. It's the same type of conditions for the first two. We won't get into that. Uh, condition C has actually been satisfied. I didn't catch, or at least a portion of it has. So this first portion about, uh, Marshall Road has been satisfied. Creekview Way does need an additional 10 feet, uh, in order to have the sidewalk on on the north side of it. So originally, the sidewalk was part of, um, Park Two. But we want that sidewalk to be developed so that when you actually get out of your car, you have that, uh, safe, kind of your your pathway, then you also have your your safe zone in order to get out and walk. So rather than wait for that park to develop to to get that sidewalk, it needs to be wrapped into this application. And I don't think that they have any, uh, issue with doing that. It's, and I think the acreage has actually been changed, but the the design for within the FDP needs to be updated to be consistent with the plat. So that's that condition. And then in terms of the variances that we noted, um, for this one, it's the diagonal parking that we've already discussed on Creekview Way, concerns, um, with this variance request. And then the right-of-way width, uh, so it's it's part of the street design because, you know, parallel parking was proposed on one side of the street and diagonal on the other. Now they have diagonal on both sides. And then the the right-of-way width associated with that to to make up that space, um, needs to be done. And so this is where that, uh, sidewalk issue is also kind of addressed in terms of the the pathway. So this is what we're proposing, uh, for the final recommendation to go to the board, is we'll take out C and we'll update, um, with, that 82-foot width requirement on Creekview Way to incorporate that sidewalk within tract B. So we're just updating that condition essentially. And then, uh, the same condition about recording it before the FDPs or needs to be recorded. Actually, it just says the final plat needs to be recorded before this FDP, uh, which is the same you'll see for the next FDP. So these ones, I think, are fairly straightforward. Uh, it gets a little bit more nuanced when we get into the development application. So just a a technicality in terms of, uh, when things occur, that was the only update to A. Uh, but that's the same technical correction. Uh, and then here we have those, uh, parking, um, conditions that Alex, uh, came up with. So one is parking audits, two is the travel demand management plan. And then, uh, three is, uh, sorry, did I read that wrong? Uh, demand management program and then an actual travel demand. Oh, I think I just had it twice. Uh, it's the same thing. I apologize for the duplicity. We'll cut that out. Uh, but anyway, those two are actually going, uh, to the development agreement anyway, so those won't be conditions on, uh, on this this application. And then finally, um, I think we're jumping ahead here. I meant to have this read be later. So we'll get into, but final milars, uh, before they're recorded, um, we're recommending, uh, certain changes, but we're going to get into those changes on these subsequent slides. But I just wanted to kind of give you a quick summary of the variance requests. And this is where, if we were to make those changes to the, um, pedestrian easements that we that we're suggesting, I think these kind of conditions go away. So the block length isn't as big of a concern. You have that pedestrian connectivity through, uh, through those areas, the building orientation. It's really to orient towards a paseo and we have paseos when we have, um, outlets in those public spaces like we've had on other developments. You know, this is orienting, uh, buildings towards buildings and not towards streets. Uh, so I think that, you know, staff's willing to to give a little on this in order to, um, you know, effectively have those public access easements through them. And then residential typologies is a little more nuanced, so we'll get into those slides. But those are more about, you know, the square footages not lining up exactly with the topologies that they've they've chosen for their walk-up apartments or for their, you know, uh, row homes. There's some, there's some variances there. The building height is the pretty basic one that we've considered, uh, 72 feet, uh, for a portion of building the wrap parking garage, building 601. And that's for roughly 2,400 square foot, uh, area, um, that exceeds the 65-foot height allowance. Uh, variance is also actually needed, which I don't think was in staff's original memo, uh, but it is in this current one for a two-story structure not to be built on. So all the commercial on the north side of the the town plaza, uh, is technically supposed to be masked at two to five stories. They're proposing a 25-foot, two 25-foot tall buildings, uh, but only one floor level. Um, and Bill kind of explained, uh, why that design is as it is, because typically you don't have a two-story, uh, use. Um, but if somebody wanted to finish it out internally, they could have a mezzanine or something like that on that second level if they wanted to. Uh, or potentially a rooftop deck if it was designed a little differently. But as it is right now, it's proposed as two one-story buildings, um, that are roughly the same massing as you get as a two-story structure. Signage, we discussed in previous meetings. Um, one was for commercial signage and it's really just that we're 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 going to rely on, uh, the design guidelines, um, for those and not show sign bands or locations through this application because we don't have any tenants. We'd be shooting at a a moving target. And then, um, they also requested that they have, uh, two locations, uh, for residential wall signs, which we discussed. And we discussed as a as a size limit of 35 square feet. And we also clarified that we wouldn't support them being internally illuminated. So the discussion was potentially to have gooseneck lights, uh, downcast illuminate signs that aren't individually illuminated themselves. Uh, and we we conditioned this allowance to just apply to the north side of of building 605, which is at the corner of, uh, Creekview Way and Marshall. And then 707, which is at the corner of Creekview Way and Superior Drive. Setbacks, we discussed those. I think, uh, Commissioner Stewart had questions on that at the last meeting. Um, in general, we feel like the the intent is being met. There are some variances where, um, like a building, the site of a building isn't adjacent to, uh, a right-of-way, you know, within that zero to 15 feet. You know, the one, uh, on the northwest side of the promenade is closer to 28 feet off of, uh, Creekview Way, but it's seven feet off the promenade, uh, which is the primary building orientation. So staff doesn't have any concerns with, um, the variations that, uh, have been shown in this application in terms of setbacks. Uh, there's also instances where the curvature of the road forces a building that's been platted at a perpendicular, or horizontal, I guess, to a what would be like north-south or east-west, um, changes that, um, just because the road curves. So anyway, um, they're pretty benign in terms of setback requests. Promenade width, we discussed already, um, but that is, um, a a code requirement here again. And then architectural materials, um, the variances are really, um, you know, limited to that new building that's proposed on, that northwest corner of Main Street, uh, and Superior Drive, uh, for the iconic building, the commercial building that's actually proposed through the FD or the PD. Excuse me. So, um, again, block length, this is just, uh, some of those. We we've already gotten into this in terms of building orientation and everything. Um, the other ones that require a variance are the, uh, Remington homes that are sited internally. I don't know that we've had any necessary concerns with any of those things, but if we want to revisit any of that, we can. Uh, residential typologies are all listed here. I don't know if you guys want to go through them, but like I mentioned, it's, you know, studio units aren't necessarily in the definition. Units under 900 square feet in size aren't proposed in the PD. Variances are required for all of those things. Um, and then, you know, they're not necessarily lining up exactly with the floor area ranges, um, for their products. So this one is in relation to the walk-up buildings on block six and block seven. These residential typologies are for, we don't have a typology for a wrapped, uh, parking structure. So they, uh, they're attempting to address that, um, to some degree with their, uh, live-work, uh, change, but it doesn't address everything and it doesn't address, um, you know, these units on the ground floor, uh, on the north side of the building. And we will get into the architecture that you guys talked about, uh, at the last meeting for this building as well. But in general, I don't think that we had too many concerns with their, uh, residential typology, uh, request, uh, variations. The one that I guess I would would note that we, I don't know that we had resolution on was the row homes in terms of the, uh, the front porches. They think that they've provided a front porch. It looks more like a a covered entrance. It's not quite the traditional front porch and it's actually in the typology, uh, to have that front porch. To Remington's credit, they do have a very generous, uh, second-floor deck, uh, that will activate, uh, the street to some degree. But it's not at at grade as a front porch would be. This is that height variance request. Uh, this is the location of that for that, uh, rooftop deck. Setbacks, we don't need to go into. This is the width of the promenade. Essentially, you know, uh, I think it's four feet on each side of the, um, that 45-foot separation, building separation, uh, is basically going to be privatized in order for, uh, patios, which will help activate the space. Block length, um, you know, all but, I think all but block 11 has a block length that succeeds, uh, 300 square feet in size. And that's why we're requesting, uh, the mid-block pass-throughs as we have. And then getting into the the request for PD direction, um, staff is seeking direction, um, for privatized parking. Uh, we feel like that's being addressed through that shared parking program. So these are the ones that were teed up in the memo. Um, I think that that this one is getting addressed through the parking program. I don't know that a condition is necessary for that one. Commercial signage, we've addressed. Uh, we'll add language that clarifies on the elevation sheets that have, that relate to a commercial building, um, that those final details will be reviewed and approved, uh, for compliance with the the, uh, design guidelines. And then, um, we did have a question, um, and I don't know how big of a concern this is, but the they the apartments for block six and seven are supposed to have, uh, sufficient outdoor spaces for residents to gather. The space within this area is fairly limited, uh, in terms of public open space, but they are immediately south of, uh, parks one and two. So there will be plenty of outdoor amenities for these residents, um, whether or not, I don't think we've even touched on that yet. And then for 4A is, uh, so the Morgan Ranch, and we can get into the actual, uh, designs for this, but we did discuss whether or not there was sufficient, uh, architectural, uh, elements and variation to, uh, the walk-up buildings proposed, north of or the north portion of block six and the north portion of block seven. And then you guys had more questions, I feel like, on, um, the the design of, uh, the wrap parking garage, particularly the north elevation and the the west elevation, and they have, uh, provided some, um, additional views. So this is what I sent you in an email earlier today. This is as it's proposed and most of the changes occur on the north side of the building. I didn't notice anything necessarily on, uh, the west side. But as you go through, one option is to add, uh, this dark, uh, material element on two of the bays within this, um, north elevation in order to help break up the facade. A different option is to include projecting, uh, balconies, um, within a few of these units in certain alignments in order to help, uh, give some, uh, articulation to that facade. And then they provided, uh, basically a block face rendering, uh, in color that you can kind of see how that north facade would look if you were looking at it straight, straight on, how the west facade would look if you were looking at it straight on, and then how the south actually works as well, uh, because all we've had was an angle at that. So staff, going back to, the recommendation, we we noted, um, you know, a more distinct first floor level, uh, to ground the structure. So in in short, um, what are our conditions? So we're we're recommending, um, that they update FDP sheets 34 and 35, which are the that, uh, designed for the building 601. Oh, no, this is actually for the signage. So the first one's for the signage, um, and they would limit that wall signage, um, to one sign on the north facade of building 605 and one sign on the north side of building 707. Uh, and both signs, uh, will be limited to that 35 square feet. So this is just the condition that goes with the discussion we had earlier in terms of what you guys directed in your last meeting, that it wouldn't be internally illuminated and that they would only be in those two locations. And then we are recommending, uh, that they provide, uh, like sufficient notes on their, uh, their plan sheets for the retail signs and just say that they're going to comply with the design guidelines. Because typically we've, when we looked at something like the Element, we actually see those signs as part of your FDP. We don't have tenants but tenants for these, so it doesn't, it doesn't seem practical to do that at this time. So we're, but we're basically requesting that that be an administrative review, um, when individual tenants come in. And I think that design guidelines give us enough direction in order to, uh, allow that. But if you don't agree, we can change that, um, condition. And then this was the condition kind of based on, uh, Commissioner Reese Reese's concern and whether or not Bill thinks it's addressed sufficiently and something else, um, you know, and his CC and ours. But we could add a note, you know, related to, um, outdoor storage, um, within those apartment uses to ensure that 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 experience, particularly on the promenade, is is an enjoyable one and you're not looking at, you know, bikes being stored on patios and stuff like that. And then for I, we are suggesting that that they actually do both things, that they incorporate the additional color and materials and they incorporate the projecting balconies on the north facade of of the building 601. And then, um, I still think something should be, uh, should be done on the western elevation as well. And what we just discussed at the last meeting was a darker contrasting stone base, uh, along, uh, Marshall Road, uh, on the ground floor of the parking garage. But those are, those are the new conditions, uh, as you see in red. But those are, those are the new conditions, as you see in red, to address the concerns of the FDP.
Bill, do you have anything to say on this?
Uh. I'm trying. You want to go through them again for me?
I'll try to get some water.
I'll take that as a no.
Generally, I think everything is, is reasonable and fine. On the, you know, I'm forty-three on the last, on the last point of doing the darker base on the west facade. I said this last time, I, I think it'll look better the way we have it drawn with the white coming to the ground, but I'm not going to follow my sword on that. If the dark base is what's required for approval, we'll make it dark. You know, I think, I think from my professional architectural opinion and our architects' architectural opinion, this is a, a more contemporary and attractive treatment as, as shown, but.
We have samples here of what they're proposing to put on that ground level, too, if you want to see it.
Yeah, we see the material samples. That'd be great. Alternatively, I really like the suggestion from the resident earlier to bring that wood, maybe, you know, wrapping that around on another corner. Not, not probably to the same degree, but that wood is really interesting. So if there's a way you could incorporate that, that beat. I think specifically I wanted to see the base material on that west elevation you were proposing. Yeah, the one along Marshall.
Well, continually, that would be.
Okay, at least the material. Is the rib pattern ver- like variable or is it just that? It's gonna be, okay.
This, this portion of the wall.
I would prefer, my, I think my preference would be a stone or brick material, probably a brick if you're using brick somewhere else or some of the wood material on that first floor rather than the fiber cement board. Or alternatively, just more detailing in another manner. I just think that, that western elevation, I don't want to design the building. I'm, I'm not an architect, but it just feels like it needs more on that western side.
Do we, do we have that rendering from a little bit more of a, do we have, do we add a rendering from looking at that face or not?
You can see these ones. I mean, that's all I got in that.
Yeah, was anything changing on the western side on these?
I don't see anything.
Okay.
I think shadows change. I had to look at it like three times. I was like, no. Uh, that's in your application. It's in the FDP. I don't know which page in the room, but let's see. Is that thirty-seven or twenty-seven? Thirty-seven, I think. So that's, that same.
Well, it's, yeah, it's sort of the cropped version of this. I'm going to pass this around just. So, you know, you can see on that, on that rendering, like we talked about last time, the intent is to have it be a more simplified, contemporary architectural treatment where you have that really nice rhythm of these, these white contemporary boxes kind of marching down the street before it transitions into the more traditional garden-style three-story product. I think it looks really clean and upscale a- as, as is. Personally, just for what it's worth, go back to one slide. I, you know, I actually don't love the random balcony thing. This is a, you know, this is a modern treatment that you see a lot downtown Denver and on some, some newer projects where you have sort of the random balconies scattered across the facade. And it's sort of interesting. I also feel like it's, for this project, kind of, it's introducing a new sort of super-modern treatment that, to me, doesn't go with a lot of the more traditional. Even on this building where we're doing the more contemporary, cleaner architectural enassing, it's still got a really sort of traditional rhythm of the facade and, and scaling of the facade. And to introduce that sort of random balcony thing to me is just, I, I don't personally love it. I, I'm, I'm more okay with the, if you go back, back one slide, I'm, I'm more okay with this idea, if you wanted to introduce some, some color variation on these blocks to, to break this up a little bit more, that, that bothers me less than the random balconies. We could also look at just potentially, you know, popping some of these balconies out just a foot or two just to, to give it a little bit more relief, but I, I would do it more, more consistently, like all three of the balconies stacked in that area would pop out, all three of the balconies in the next one, instead of that really modern sort of hopscotch approach. And that's just personally my, my architectural preference, but for what it's worth.
I don't have strong opinions on this north elevation. It's not as visible. I'm with you. I think the random balcony feels a little weird, but I would just encourage, whatever is going to be, you know, kind of most activating and most marketable, I don't, I don't, I don't really care on this one as much.
All right. Anything else? Remember that long list we started?
Yeah, can we, can we quickly scan through those things?
Now's your chance.
Sort of joking, but do you want to quickly scan through them as we go?
Your silence just means you're okay with it, so.
I, I know.
Or you're tired. You have another board to, to go through.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
There were the signs and the signage. You had some questions about.
So I guess, you know, this, this condition is saying that we need to incorporate both of those changes. I would, I would ask that we make that more flexible or take that out altogether or just do the, the color instead of the random balconies thing, because I really don't love the random.
Is that what we just looked at?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I'm okay with taking that all over again. Can we just, you were okay with just taking that out and letting it be?
The projecting balconies or the whole thing?
The, the whole, the whole thing, right? We didn't have any strong opinions about the.
I think kind of any of the options, either the little balconies or the additional color, either one, I think. I don't.
Or we don't care. I mean, it's one or the other. Either we, either we care and we want to say something or we don't care and he can take it out.
No, I, I like the idea of having an area of the balconies projecting. I think it does give some contour to the building and.
So is that Bill's suggestion of the, of the smaller balconies or the, or the rear, not the rear, but the random balconies?
Not the random balconies.
Just the ones Bill was talking about, but there are areas that will. Like that, yeah, like that?
That's not a balcony, though. I mean, that's not even a Juliet, is it?
That, that's a Juliet. You know, we, we probably could pop that out a foot or two if we wanted to. I'm asking my architect. The recess, yeah, I, I, I would act, I think that the most attractive architecturally would be to take these inset balconies that are true balconies and just push that balcony edge out a foot or two so that where you, you, you both see that and it would be these ones. You would, you, you both get that relief in the, in the facade wall as that jogs back and you get this balcony then projecting out a little bit and just creates a lot more kind of layering in the building. Instead of, instead of tacking on balconies onto the flat wall that you kind of feel like plant-on balconies, I, I think it would, you know, feel better to, to do that, like Terry suggested, sort of on these inset balconies, just make those project at least a foot.
That would, that would be my preference. I like that idea.
Color variation shown here and then project the inset balconies.
Color variation.
The recessed, recessed balconies that come out an extra foot or two.
Yeah, I am the color variation.
It's got more characters in the building.
I do like the color variation a little bit. I'm not, again, I'm not. I do like it, but it's not critical to me, so.
Can you run back through the, all the other conditions real fast just? Fine.
This is the only new one in red.
So the, my only comment on, on this, and I don't know how much time we really want to spend on it. We have it, to me, this language is just a little bit foggy. The applicant shall implement a travel demand management program. We already have a travel demand management program, which is from 2015. We can implement pieces of it, which we are implementing via this FDP and in things that we're already showing. I think we can better kind of list the pieces of that existing TDM that we're implementing with this project. I don't really want to write a brand-new TDM. We already have a TDM. So I don't, I, I just, I don't know how we can clarify or.
It's a better conversation with Alex, but he just walked out.
Okay. So we can.
But it is going to be part of the development agreement, so that's just going to have to get negotiated through that. And I think it's already in the works.
Yeah, that's, and that's fine. We're, we're doing, we're, we're taking that TDM. When, when we designed the FDP, we took the TDM and did as many things as we could do as part of the FDP in the design, so we're already doing this. I don't have a problem with this general language. I just want the condition to read clearly. And then going back another one.
These are two other elements that are going into the development agreement, so.
Parking audits are fine. We'll do those. Talked about the TDM. On the other one, you can go back another page if there's another, are there, are there more?
Oh, for the other applications?
Oh, I guess, is that it?
This is for the FDP application.
Yeah, so that's, so no, I'm, I'm fine with all those, with the clarifications they just said.
I don't really see any public here for additional, for public comment.
Can we let Chase go if you guys don't?
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry, Chase. I know he's been sitting back there. Everybody was good with the fly-throughs from last one.
Well, I'm sure we got a couple more phases to go, Bill.
Sort of saw it last night on the, a little weird the way it was displayed on the TV.
Yeah, there's a, we have a little bit of technical snap, but I think I wasn't feeding through it.
It was okay, but yeah, yeah, it was a little, little, little hard. I'm going to assume we don't have any more public comment, right? Because I don't see anybody from the public. Okay. I'm probably not quite ready to close the hearing for discussion. There, I know there were at least one or two or three items from the last couple of meetings that people had some opinions on. We have these variances that we can, we might have some questions for staff on. Anybody have any things that are on your mind already or should I try to run through some of these and spark your thoughts or?
Let's run through what you have.
Sure. It's basically just a quick thing that, I mean, you know, that I wrote down as Stephen was going. I mean, we have the variance we, we request, right? That I, I don't think there's much in there. I mean, the block length kind of comes into play with the public right-of-way, right? There's a, I think that's a slightly different discussion. We can save that till the, till, to the end of our discussion. And that also came, came with the buildings, you know, these apartment buildings aren't facing streets or paseos. They're sort of facing each other. These are apartment buildings, so they're a little bit, a little bit different. There's the building height, seventy-two feet on number six oh one, which I think is necessary. Let's see, block side, I didn't quite follow the whole Block Seven lot, two, two-story versus one-story. I wrote it down, but I figured I could have you just run that by to see if.
Sure.
What's the variance, what's the request to go to, to go to two one-stories instead of a two-story?
It's just the zoning designation on this block, so let me just get through it real fast.
That's, that's on the northern Block Seven? Or, I guess it is Block, it's Block Seven, okay.
Yeah.
Which is north of the.
So this is one of those two structures. And if we go to this kind of, but the plaza is located here. We have two buildings on Lot Two, Block Seven.
Okay, so it is a southern, or the.
It's a southern portion of, they're both commercial buildings.
Got it.
They are of a height that's comparable to a two-story building, but the PD says it's supposed to be, you know, the massing is supposed to be two to five stories and they're proposing a one-story building, so they need a, a variance from that.
Okay. That doesn't necessarily change it. If they wanted to change it later, it would still be permitted to be a taller building if.
We would probably need to do an FDP amendment for them to add a second floor, but it would be consistent with the PD, yeah.
Okay.
We, we talked about rooftop decks in that area.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, okay. There was the signage. Do we have anything more to say on signage? Okay. All right, there were the setbacks, which I think we, everybody was okay with. The promenade width, it seemed to be fine with, I don't know, the discussion. And then the architectural material on, on Block K, the shipping container kind of style, right?
Right.
That's a materials change.
I'm fine with the material change. I'm just like, operationally, that building looks really tricky to operate. Have you talked to potential tenants of that? I mean, it looks super cool, but it just looks challenging to, from an operational perspective.
Yeah, I haven't closed it yet, if you're good.
Yeah, no, you're right. And that's sort of what I was getting to with, like, we need to find a tenant. I think, I think we'll, we'll ultimately design something that looks a lot like this, but it very well may morph and shift depending on, you know, if it's a restaurant, they're probably going to want a bigger kitchen space than this has. If it's just like a tasting room thing, this is probably perfect as it is. You know, we'll, we'll see who we, who we get. It's really not that complicated of a building when you just look at it in plan. It, it looks a lot more complicated in 3D than it, than it really is. It's really just kind of two rectangles at a acute angle that intersect and then have a deck sort of put over them.
And lots of stairs.
And, and lots of stairs and, you know, rooftop activation and all that stuff. So I, I think it's cool-looking and funky and it activates that corner and we'll get into more of the details on how exactly it operates and locks up and has service once we find a tenant and understand what they want to do with it.
I'm guessing, I'm assuming we may see an FDP amendment at some point on this building.
Very, very possibly.
Yeah. I think it's a cool concept to just keep, keep exploring it, talk to people.
Yeah, if it looks a lot like this, I would hope that we can just go ahead and build it or it's a, maybe potentially an administrative amendment. If it's something totally different and it's a, you know, what's the guy's name, the milk, milk jug or whatever? Sorry. Uh, sorry, thinking on that. Little man. If it's a little man ice cream or something totally different, then maybe it is an amendment. I don't, you know, we'll, we'll deal with that.
Alright. Uh, let's see, there were covenants to keep the promenade patios, the promenade patios tidy. We had a condition in there already. You had something there.
If you feel like it needs to be conditioned, otherwise-
Yeah, do we want to, do we want to condition that? I mean, I, I'm not terribly concerned. I think for the, anywhere else, but I mean, for the promenade especially, I think it's important, yes.
Hi, uh, Ryan Morgan, uh, Morgan Ranch, ETS. I just want to say, so when we sign leases and we have these patios, we actually have addendums in leases. This is not just pertaining to the promenade. This is every patio on the entire property has to obey our certain guidelines, which means no storage of bikes, no boxes, no trash. You can't keep things out there, and if they do, then we find them. And if they continue to find them, then this means for eviction. So this is not just something that we want to propose for the promenade. This is across the entire property. We make them sign a document when they sign their lease.
Do we need, do we need anything in the?
I mean, it'd be nice to memorialize that in a manner that this town has a little bit more control over. I would look to legal, I guess, if that's something they feel like we can put clear restrictions around what constitutes storage and what isn't. And I, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, um-
If they sell the property to another operator, would that maintain with the lease? Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure that, that it would be kind of appropriate to put in kind of an FTP condition kind of, uh, as to like their maintenance of, of a particular area.
Tell you what, could we take whatever language, could you just work with them on whatever language they? I don't want to create something that you aren't already doing, right? But, but so that it's at least maintained for the promenade during that walkway, so that if these buildings do get sold, we've got that as part of our FTP, but let's use your language, so we're not, so we don't have a conflict immediately, right? Does that make sense?
Yeah, whatever.
Is that cool?
Does that work then?
Well, I mean, I guess, what kind of language we're, we're, we kind of thinking of, I mean, I guess.
Well, he just said, he said their leases say roughly, no storage, no trash, no blah blah, whatever. My goal was not to have to make them change their lease, right? And it sounds like what's in their lease is what we want.
I don't, I don't know, yeah, if it's, if it's, I would look to staff and legal.
Right, yeah. I can leave it to you guys to work that in.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it might be kind of difficult to put that in as a condition for FTP, you know, for an FTP. I mean, I think, um, kind of privately, kind of how they handle things like that is kind of, kind of their call. But I, I, I'm not sure that we can actually put it in as a, as a condition.
Okay, yeah, we can. I mean, I'm okay with their lease. If, I mean, if we can, great. If not, I'm cool either way. Um, let's see. Stay away from the public walkway for just a minute. We have the right of way on Creekview Way, diagonal parking. I think that's just a given, right? That wasn't a problem with anyone anywhere. Okay. Alright, should we, you know, I think we can have our discussion about, once I close public hearing about the walkways, what we want to do there. Alright, Stephen, do you want to go back? So there was a couple, there was one sheet that had, you wanted direct guidance from us. I want to make sure we are ready to answer those.
It's not just one sheet, but-
Well, yeah, I crossed a few sheets, right? Did I, let me see, did I miss anything in my list that, uh?
Uh, I think you went through the variance request.
I went through the variance request primarily, yeah. I did touch on signage and right of way. You have one sheet, though, that you were looking for some direction from us on. Everything else I thought got caught in, caught up in the variances.
Uh, there's a few sheets I just haven't got to yet. Okay.
Yeah, this PC direction sheet, so, um, parking, we don't, that's being dealt with. The signage, we didn't have any, any issues, right? Yeah, the common outdoor spaces, I mean, Lord, I think there's all kinds of room for people to hang out around here, uh, so I'm good with that. And we talked about block six and seven, right?
We talked about block six and seven in the past meeting. Those are those apartment uses and just how, uh, they'll orient and activate, uh, Main Street. So when we talked about this, this is where the origin of the tidiness of the patios kind of came up. But I don't know whether or not you guys finished that conversation, or if you had anything else to add on the architecture for those walk-up apartments.
Can you pull up an image of that?
Yeah.
Of elevation?
Is this also the one with the, the closed-in porches that were too tight? Is that the same, or is that different?
So you got two different kind of, um, views of the apartments. Uh, their massing is very consistent. It's just the different color schemes. So they'll have, uh, some patios for individual units, and then you can't see, there's some projected, uh, kind of covered entries for the, when you go upstairs to get to the upper levels. But, you know, the, it's fairly limited compared to what you'd get with, you had, you know, a bunch of townhomes, um, because of the product that's proposed.
Yeah. I think I'm okay.
You know, I, I like the design of that building, and I like the way that it looks. Particularly with the way that, uh, the color scheme works with, uh, the architecture there. Um, I'm going to go out on a limb here and say that that's not a porch, um, but that that's an entry. But that I am fine with that, um, being, being, um, the way that that building is situated and how it, um, opens up onto the, um, um, the street and to the, um, um, Greenway.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to put it.
Alright, anything else we want to be able to talk to the staff? We can get some clarifying, clarifying things from staff after I close, but generally discussion, everybody good? Alright. Dan, any reason you think I, procedurally, I think we've got no public comment. I've called for that.
No, I think you're good. Yeah, you did call for public comment.
Yep.
Unless, uh, the applicant has any additional-
Yeah, if there are any closing statements, anything else? Of course.
In closing.
Two minutes, no.
Alright, I, you know, I just, uh, I hope you go the right way on the public access thing. I think to me, that's the only real question, um, you know, that's outstanding, that, that we haven't kind of seen eye to eye on. And I, and I do think that's an important issue, uh, that, that doesn't have any basis in, in the underlying documents. But to end on a positive note, uh, you know, I, I'm, I'm really excited about this project. I, I think, you know, everyone in the public is too, and so, um, you know, thanks for your careful, careful consideration and, uh, look forward to, to your decision here and look forward to hopefully getting this thing, you know, open in a year and a half and, and going to enjoy the, the restaurants and bars with our whole team here, so, thanks.
Well, thank you for working with us over the last few weeks. I know there was a lot, lots that needed to be cleaned up and lots happened. Alright, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And that. Want to talk about public access easements and walkways? That's the only out, I think that's the only outstanding. Unless, I mean, everything's open for discussion, so why don't we just go down the row here, Dave? Go, go ahead.
To be honest, I'm still, I mean, what's bothered me about this project, uh, since we first got this submission is the fact that it's just these three blocks. Or four blocks, uh, six, seven, ten, eleven, four, six, seven, ten, and eleven. I mean, according to the design guidelines, I mean, one goal of the new downtown is to provide a vibrant pedestrian-oriented, sustainable town center of the town of Superior that will draw people from as far away as the North Metro Denver area and Boulder County. And what I interpreted that partly is that we'd like to move the town away from just being a bedroom community, which is essentially what it is at the moment. However, uh, every flex space on the land use plans has so far been devoted to more bedrooms. And what concerns me in this case is it seems possible or even likely that when we see the plan for blocks two, five, and eight, which are the other three blocks beside McCaslin, they are possibly or even likely to come in as residential too. In addition to making all the flex space residential, uh, this plan proposes to increase residential density and add still more bedrooms by requesting variances on the requirements for block lengths, uh, for buildings to face rights of way or passeos, and by reducing the sizes of apartments. One of the questions that was in Stephen's memo, although we haven't discussed it again tonight, the staff is seeking direction on whether or not the apartment buildings within blocks six and seven include sufficient common outdoor spaces for residents to gather. There isn't much in the way of common outdoor spaces for residents to gather in this plan. These are the core blocks of the new downtown, and I think it would be sensible to consider the overall area, perhaps even including the development on Rogers Farm, because that's going to be all residential just across the road. In effect, I think what we ought to be looking at is what is the end, end result going to be? What does the end result of the first step in the process? In the absence of some of this information, I, I think I have to question these changes. The people who developed the guidelines clearly put in a great deal of effort, and I'm reluctant to supersede their judgment with mine, just on the basis of what we've heard and no further discussion around the overall, uh, uh, area. The, the other thing is we're being asked to give, uh, uh, flexibility to the developer on this, which I think is fine. I mean, I think everybody wants a good, good project. Uh, but we're not really asking for anything back. And I wonder if that's appropriate too. Are, are there any requests that the town should be making of the developer in return for these, uh, variances? In developing our annual plan, uh, we talked about affordable housing. Should we be asking for some of these additional apartments, uh, that are going to be built and be made affordable? I don't know the answer to that question. I'm not pretending that I do. I'm just thinking it's the kind of question we should think about asking. I, I, I mean, we heard a talk about this civic space. I, I, I asked Stephen this afternoon if he knew how much this civic space was going to cost, and the answer is no. I, I mean, frankly, I can't see, I, I have difficulty seeing what that civic space will be used for. I mean, or how often it will be used. I, I have a feeling that if you start putting large garage doors on the first floor, it's not going to be an inexpensive civic space. And when it was first proposed, uh, I don't think the town had purchased the land over the dealership, so now we're going to have two civic spaces. I, I, I mean, I, 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 I like this project. Uh, I, I mean, I'm quite happy with the architecture. Whether I would be willing to say, yes, we should go ahead with it, I, I find does depend very much on what the proposal is to do with the rest of the area.
Which we really don't have any-
Which we don't have any clue about.
You can build a block by block, right, on the, the, I love what we have. I, I think you talked about, you know, the, the- Um, I, you know, I, I think we, we really don't know what the other blocks, I mean, we have no way of knowing what the other blocks are going to be presented other than through our design guidelines and whether or not requests are made to change those guidelines. I, you'd mentioned, um, are we getting anything back? And I, I guess some of what I felt in this proposal was, you know, the give ta, the give back on the commercial was the dedication of the corner pieces to commercial, right? And not restricting them to, um, the percentage reduction that was, and, and that was really, I mean, I couldn't even understand that language and what it meant.
I agree.
There was, there was real concern about how to, how to understand that and, and apply it, so, um, I actually like that change.
Oh, I think that's supposed to-
You know, that, that was, that was some of the, the give back there on that area, so, um, and as far as supersede, are there guidelines in particular that were superseded that concerned you?
Well, we have, I mean, what, what I think the design guidelines as they do at the moment was that what they would move, they would obviously, uh, drive a less dense, there'd be fewer buildings, because the buildings would all have to face on passeos or on rights of way. There'd be fewer apartments, because, uh, the apartment sizes in the design guidelines are larger than the ones that are being proposed here. I mean, a minimum of what, nine hundred to eleven hundred square feet, whereas in this development, there are, I think, eighty-seven apartments that are four hundred square feet or-
But doesn't that really help the affordability? I mean, I don't think we're getting affordable housing, quote unquote, in, in this development.
I've, I've no idea whether to-
It's certainly cheaper to, to get a four hundred square foot apartment than a nine hundred square foot apartment.
Yeah, but it means there's a lot more people there as well. And more people means more traffic. I mean, is that, is that what we want for the down? Or is that what the town wants for downtown?
Yep.
Apparently it wasn't when the design guidelines were written. But, I, I mean, they're, they're old. Uh, circumstances change. I, I, I'm perfectly willing to say that we should change with circumstances. But I think we should think about the overall situation, not just one part of it.
I, I would just point to, I appreciate what you're saying, and I agree with a lot of what you're saying as far as, you know, the overall vibrancy is also going to depend on what comes in on these, you know, last remaining blocks. And if they all come in as apartments, that's, I think that'd be disappointing, right? If we don't get some offices or some other things in there to activate it. I agree with you. I think the density question, though, I mean, the allowed development square footage that was approved through those PDs is, you know, substantially higher, right? Than what they're proposing here, so I think the, the density question, we're already getting less density. If you're looking for less density, we're getting less density.
Not necessarily.
Than what the overall allowed is.
Well, the overall allowance is fourteen hundred units, okay? Uh, I think with this development, it goes up to a thousand and sixty-five, or it's, it's in that, might not be thousand, it's about that number anyway. If you leave, I mean, that leaves you three hundred and fifty or thereabouts to put on blocks two, five, or eight, if they go residential. One of our former trustees pointed out to me when I first joined this commission that this was a limit, not a goal.
Absolutely, yeah, it's the maximum, right?
Yeah, and it's altered. I mean, this, I mean, depending on how long you've been looking at this, that number was way higher than fourteen hundred units when we started first talking about what this downtown should look like and what would make it viable. It was closer to twenty, it was over two thousand housing units. In fact, I think it was Ranch Capital that brought that number down from what we'd originally had. And I can't remember exactly how it went, but I mean, our, our original plan was much higher, much, a much higher population than what ended up being in there now, um, or what was proposed by some of the early design guidelines and consultants that we had come in that told us we'll make this viable, right? So we, I was pleased with the fact that it's, that it came in less, right? That we're, you know, about, probably close to half of what we originally talked about, but-
It's a long time.
But that was a long time ago.
It's really been a long time.
Yeah, and things, and things do continue to change, yeah, yeah. Okay. And that was a lot of general comments, and we can do that. Uh, I do want to hit the public key access easement, but at some point, do you want to move through? Do you have any, any additional comments?
Really, the public easement.
Okay, we'll come back to that then. Jerry, do you have anything, just in general?
No, just about the public easement.
Okay.
That was my focus.
Lisa, do you have anything beyond the?
I mean, generally, I'm really excited that we're getting something downtown. I think this is, um, you know, long awaited. And while I think it, you know, maybe isn't exactly what we envisioned, I think, given this point in time, this is something that is a viable project and, um, yeah, I think overall, I think you guys have, have done a good job. I think there's, I think we're talking about the last two percent here, you know? I think overall, I think we're really close. I don't think any of the things we're talking about tonight are, you know, going to make or break this thing one way or the other, but I do think we're trying to make it the best we can. I do feel like the architecture on, you know, some of those buildings and patios, I don't know that we're going to get into that level of detail tonight. I'm fine with that. But I think before you get to the board, I would really just make sure you're bringing your best foot forward on, on some of those, um, variance requests that Stephen has identified. your best foot forward on, on some of those variance requests that Stephen has identified, so we can wait for the public access.
Anything, Anthony?
Just quickly, I, I too am very excited about this, and I am happy that we have someone who's stepped up and has presented us with a proposal to finish our downtown. So I'm pretty pleased with that piece. The one thing that I do have questions about, in addition to the elephant in the room, is the flex space that's being requested. And really, I have been trying to visualize how a double unit would look in some of that proposed flex space, and I'm having a hard time figuring that out. I mean, do we have this, you know, double wide storefront with only half of it being a storefront and the other half being cardboarded up or having a mural there or something, you know? So that's, that's one of the issues that I, I think that really kind of needs to be talked about. You, if you're going to have a, an occupant, a lessee who wants a double space like that, he's probably going to be able to afford to make that into a commercial space, period. So that's the, the one question that I had about that. In addition to that, I think there needs to be a lot of clarification on how that is going to work. I know Mr. Jinks said that, you know, we'll look at things about twelve months out when it comes time to convert those commercial spaces into flex space. But I think we need to have some guarantee that it doesn't happen all at once, that we maintain some of that commercial space and have a balance there with some of that commercial space versus some of the live-work space. So those are the only kind of things that I have questions about, and I wanted to kind of bring up, and, you know, maybe ask my fellow commissioners for some guidance on that as well, because it's not very clear to me.
Well, that's, that is something we have to, since I've closed the hearing, we've got to discuss, but I can't ask Stephen to maybe bring up the, oh, the, the blocks that show the, well, we'll need this, too. That's actually, that's somewhat helpful. So to answer your one question, what I think, and others can pitch in as well, that one of the requirements where we, and we are, we are, I think, suggesting that we let staff and the applicant finalize the language, but I think the concept is that we would require any live-work space, that the, the portion that's facing the street would, at, at twenty-foot depth minimum, I think, is kind of the conversation we've been having, would be a commercial space that's facing it. It has to be, it's required. And if you do, that way, if you double it up, still, the first twenty feet has to be, that's facing the street on the first floor, has to be commercial space. Now, that could be a chiropractor, that could be the coder sitting in there at late at night, coding that somebody didn't want to see through the window, it's still a commercial space, right? There, there are, there are lots of things that could go in there that we may or may not like, because it's, I mean, we can't really control that too much, but, but that, does that answer your question about the, the commercial space?
So it gives me your impression of how that's going to work. So I'm still. So I, I'm still a little bit unclear, because if you combine those two bays.
These two?
Yes. You're basically talking, you know, a little over, well, what did we say, twenty-five or twenty-four hundred square feet? And.
Then, then all this would have, this is the minimum amount that would be commercial. We're not saying it's going to be, that would just be the minimum amount that, that we would allow.
And, and I understand that. So how does that storefront then look? Do you have that as being one storefront with one entry? Do you have it as having two entrances? And there's a lot of details in, in my mind that needs to be worked out there, and.
That's a level of detail I don't know that fits this, but maybe I.
I don't know that we're going to get there either, but it is a kind of a question and a concern about how that's going to look, how that's going to work.
So their block face here kind of shows you how a storefront might look in different capacities. So this is actually their pass-through, but.
Is this two?
This would be three. Three bays here.
This is three bays here.
And then two for this taco joint, one for the one that's labeled Gladwell, even though there's a second. But if there was one, one user here, it would look some, something like this.
Certainly.
Same, same for here. If it's two users and two bays, it would look something similar to this.
I mean, I guess it could have two doors, if that's what the, the user wanted, that would probably be up to them, but, I mean, I would imagine most are going to have a single-door entrance, and it would be one big space. There were a couple places he explained where there was a firewall, I forget the term he used, but a.
It's a difference in grade, that would change.
Yeah, there was a change in grade where he couldn't, you know, he couldn't combine, there were places he was restricted to combine units, but, like this corner one, I think there was an entrance to the.
There's also a break here where that pass-through goes all the way through.
Yeah, so there are some restrictions and limitations to that. I mean, I was pretty happy, I'll let other commissioners speak to what you understood that to be.
I think that's a concern, whether, you know, they combine two spaces and they have two doors. Is the occupant going to just, you know, put a sign on it that says, go to the next door?
I can't care about that at this level, at the planning committee, I don't think. I think that's a design element for the, for the tenant that rents it, and it's a build-up question. That feels way beyond what I would think we'd want to be looking at, but that's just me.
Yeah, from a scale perspective, combining one or two, I don't think having those, you know, two bays with one door breaks up that, it doesn't feel extremely spread out to me.
I mean, we see what people do on Pearl Street and other, I mean, you've seen those type, types of.
Yeah.
Yeah, how they, how they, there's a variety of ways people do it. There's some that have two doors, there's some that have a corner and have a door on each side of the corner.
I think varying widths is fine. I think it feels more natural than having, you know, super routinely spaced, you know, twenty feet door, twenty feet door, twenty feet door, so I'm finding a way.
Well, and what about the concern of the, the use? I mean, I don't want to be the only one with an opinion here, I mean, are we comfortable with what?
I think it's challenging. I mean, there's a block of, there's a block of live-work apartments off North Broadway in Boulder, and I went up and looked at them, there's about twenty units there. There's only about five signs outside. If you go in and look in the units, most of them have blinds or drapes or something closing the, like, closing the outside, I mean, separating the outside from the inside, so, I mean, if you're looking to activate the street, it doesn't really work.
So you don't think the requirement that we're saying, we, we, so the requirement that we're, that, that will, that will be in the FDP is that they must have a commercial space facing the road? And I think, if we want to use the word active, I'm happy to use the word active, I, or at least direct staff to, to make sure that, that, when you hear live-work, that's such a broad term, right? We defined it, and we're trying to define it here, right? So, you know, live-work could be exactly what you're saying, you know? It, it could be a building that, the living room's on the front floor, and, you know, steps down to the street, but that's not the intent in a downtown setting, right? We're trying to define that to be different. So it is very important that we define, I mean, if there's concern about the definition, then let's work on that a little bit.
It's not just the definition, it's the appearance. I mean, if somebody could, I mean, I think.
But I want to define the, let's define the appear, let's define it. We're concerned about the design, let's bring that up and let's get it defined and.
I mean, do you want to say people can't put drapes or blinds across their front windows?
So the applicant has clarified that they'll condition that, and I, I think that's a very valid question. I don't know how you do that, because I think that businesses, you know, when glare comes in, want to be able to put blinds down, just as often as somebody that maybe doesn't have an active business, but if you go to, even though the places that have the garage doors have blinds that can come down in order to prevent, you know, the sun glare, and you're going to want that if you're going to.
Sure.
So that's a tricky condition to try to impose.
Yeah, I mean, we're getting into some design elements.
Right.
To a building, which I.
Well, there's unintended, unintended consequences, you know? But I think transparency is one thing that we could look at in, on the ground level, just having a minimum amount of transparency. What I mean by that is glass. So if you have, you know, two bays, and you have, you know, your, your standard kind of retail entrance on, on one side, you can't brick off the other side, it has to still be glass.
Which we tried to do somewhat in the marketplace.
Yeah, so, I mean, we could look at additional conditions like that.
Does that help?
And if you can refresh my memory, we said that there would be a limit of twenty-four hundred square feet, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's in there.
They wouldn't be able to combine more than two.
They wouldn't be able to combine more than two.
Because you can't exceed twenty-five hundred square feet. There's not a limit to the number that you can combine, there's a limit to the size, and the minimum size is twelve hundred square feet, so you can't get past two.
Correct. The maximum's not just twenty-five hundred.
The maximum, sorry, yeah. Does, does it help to, I mean, and then, I mean, we, I mean, I, I would trust Stephen to take what we're trying to get across and see if he can get this defined.
I think we'd want to look at what they're actually proposing, and then we'd base the transparency off of maintaining what, what they've shown, because they have a very good product, in terms of what is going to go on Main Street.
Yep.
Yeah, they match the FDP and look good, right?
And the second part of that was, if, you know, there can be some certainty or specificity in the final product about when these units can convert, that might be helpful, too. And I'm not sure that I've seen that anywhere.
We haven't, we haven't circled back to ranch on that. I mean, basically, what we concluded was we couldn't have this contingency plan as, as they initially proposed. We can't have one option or the other, they have to pick a, a path, and the PD allowed us to do that, in terms of, it grants them some flexibility, but technically, it grants them flexibility from day one. I think if, you know, Bill's willing to commit to it, I think, you know, I don't know that staff could impose a condition like that, but if the applicant's willing to, you know, clarify that, you know, they're going to come in for, you know, a core and shell kind of finish for this, for each of these buildings, and they'd have to come back in for a live-work conversion at some point, if they're willing to suggest that, you know, a timeframe for that, that it can't happen before eighteen months, or it can't happen before twenty-four months, or whatever that case may be, if that's what you're suggesting would make you more comfortable, then we could look into a condition like that, but I, I think we'd have to have the applicant on board with that, that condition.
Yeah, I would definitely agree with that. Yeah, and that was clarified as well, that the zoning change lets them do it, you know, day one.
And I'm fine, I'm fine with that. I just wanted some clarity and some transparency around that, too, that, you know, that we have some assurance that after five weeks of a unit being vacant, we're not going to have someone come back and ask for that to be converted to flex space or live-work space.
Well, and keep in mind, it is zoned live-work from day one. I mean, I think we really, we all have to understand that. I mean, it is, it is going to be zoned live-work day one, and we are trusting the applicant, or not, if we don't recommend passing this, right? We are, we are trusting the applicant, and, I mean, you listen to it, market conditions and, and what he, what he can get for commercial space, it's not in his best interest to, to go out and turn these, and rent these things and work. It's just, it just doesn't make sense.
Right, but also, isn't, I mean, as we re-clarified the language, I think we also found out that they also have the right to do that. They want a little more than what we had in the PD, but they have the right to have that flex space, right?
They've always had some flex space. It's just that language was so bizarre.
I, I agree, but, but I just want to make sure, they always had the right to do something. They came and said, we want a little more than what we had.
Yeah, they originally came back and, yes, and they wanted, they wanted more, and they wanted an eighteen-month cut over, and, and legal said, yeah, no, you can't, you can't have an automatic change in zoning, because we've had that issue once already in town, and that caused a problem, so, so, so we, we have to zone it the way it needs to be zoned.
Right, but what I'm saying is to ask, there was no reason they needed to come and ask us with the original zoning for that certain percentage, the twenty-five percent or whatever, they could just do.
They already had it.
They had it already, so they could do that from day one and come in and do the flex space on day one.
And I, I don't think there was any requirement to have.
So, let me clarify something. I mean, it's a complicated what they can and can't do, like, really, we had to work together. So Ranch Capital's coming in with a proposal, or Morgan Ranch, excuse me, is coming in with a proposal to do what we've always kind of envisioned for this area, which is to have this ground floor kind of mixed-use building that has apartments above it. And what they, what they can't do through the typology right now is, I mean, they could only have ground floor commercial because of their residential typologies. Conversely, they could have come in and just asked to build condos in this area, and they would have had a twenty-five percent allowance from the ground floor up to have residential uses here. So there's really kind of a disconnect between what the live-work allowance has in, in the typologies and what, you know, that language there says they can do. So we're getting a, we're, the other give that I guess they're not getting credit for is that they're proposing what we've all envisioned in terms of this mixed-use building, and we're giving them, you know, some additional latitude on, on the ground floor for, for residential in this certain configuration that also assures us, you know, commercial work use.
Street-facing.
On street-facing, so, that's what I want to be clear.
No, no, that's a great clarification, because I, I didn't understand that, but I still think they had.
They do have a residential allowance, but it would, they would have needed to come in like with a townhome or something that actually fit a typology, which we wouldn't have wanted. So like, we're, we're working with them because they're trying to give us what I think everyone's envisioned for this, this, this product or this area.
And I'm certainly open to, if staff can work out a timeframe that they're willing to put a minimum on. I, I think, yeah, I mean, the way Bill described it, I was pretty comfortable with, you know, at twelve months, they're going to come down ten percent, and then twenty percent, and then thirty percent, and fifty percent. They got to get down to fifty percent before it's worth them even going to live-work build out. Now, do I know that for sure? No. He's a developer, I don't know whether I trust him, we'll find out when the time comes, but, you know, it's.
Well, and that's been the thing, and it's kind of why we wanted transparency on that, because we have a history of not trusting developers sometimes.
Yeah, no, there's, there's some trust issues, and, and so, that's what I'm saying. I mean, if there's a, if there's something that we can come up with that they can agree on to, to do this, I'm, I'm open to asking staff to.
You can ask them, see what we have.
Yeah, and he can say yes or no.
And I understand, we can only do what we can.
Yeah, yeah.
Like I said, it was just a question, and I'm trying to get that figured out, so.
That's, that's good. All right, shall we, I'll, I'll just, I mean, I'll comment. I'm pretty, I'm comfortable. I, I will say, from day one, I, I had a bigger vision of lots more retail and lots more vibrancy and everything else for this development from when we started talking about this twenty years ago. I don't think, I, I don't know that the market's there, but I feel like this build-out, if, if the market's there, I feel like this build-out provides and supports that. I think there's a lot that we can do with this, a lot of that live-work space, I, I have no doubt in my mind that if Morgan Ranch can rent that out for, for three, four, whatever, whatever percentage higher it is to rent it out commercial, they're, they're going to do that, and that, and if the demand is there, I think there's a lot of room to, to turn that, what might look like live-work today into pure commercial, right? So, and that was actually, I mean, just the idea that we could have put office above, I did have in my head, too, that we'd have office above retail with residential above that, that was, you know, those were things we talked about many, many years ago as well. So I will encourage that the additional lots, that we get some office space going in here, because it's, it's missing, and I keep seeing office buildings getting built everywhere, and I'm trying to figure out why we don't have them here, so that, that's, those are my comments. So with that, let's talk about these easements, this public easement. When I start down on this end, you, Phyllis, Anthony, do you have anything to say on this, whether we have public easements on right-ofways?
Well, sure. Sure, I'll, I'll start. I think that this particular issue, more than probably any other, throughout this project and this concept, is going to need some pretty major discussion. Whenever you have an issue with public access, it seems that you have to look towards and, rely on our town staff and the people that have kind of helped develop our, develop our town. So when I hear Stephen saying that there's some pretty major issues there, as well as our attorney saying that there's some pretty major issues there, I think. I think it's something that we really do need to look at and address. I would think if I were a property owner and doing a development, I would want to share, or the town or the municipality that I was in, I would want them to share some of that risk associated with having people walking through a particular project or a particular parking lot or sidewalk or something like that. So I'm a little bit confused about, you know, why it is that we've gotten to this point, and why we haven't been able to work this out, even though we've been talking about it for over a month now. And so that, that's a little confusing to me, and I think we do need to give it some more discussion. I think on the surface, it makes sense, what I'm hearing the developers say, and that this is a private project, and that they should be allowed not to have public access through this. On the other hand, here we are in this room now, and we're also hearing that nothing like this has been done before in any of the projects in downtown Superior. And that's a little concerning to me. So I don't know how we got here, but I think it's something that we really need to kind of spend some more time talking about. And at this point, I'm, I'm torn, I'm not sure which way to go on this. I do see both sides, and, you know, want to clear it up.
Well, and I do think it's kind of in our court to make the recommendation, or not, and just let the board take it, which I guess is the third option that we can take as well. But I, I'm, I'm torn as well. I, I, I understand the applicant's position, and I can look at the marketplace or the Safeway or any other shopping center that you can walk through, and it's private property, and, you know, the walkway, you know, if there's a couple of different buildings on a, on a, on a strip mall, you know, I don't, I would be shocked that the sidewalk in between the buildings back to the backside is, is public easement. It might be, but my, my guess is it'd probably be private. On the other hand, this is a huge, this is a huge development. It's, it's not meeting the design criteria for the block lengths, right? So we're, we're allowing them to have these longer blocks, and, you know, there's a sidewalk in between, and they did give and, and, you know, agreed to put a public easement on, in the middle of Block Six, right? Next to the parking garage, right? So that's public easement, and we have the promenade going up the middle, that's public easement. The promenade or the plaza is public easement, and then all the sidewalks around are public easement. So what we are actually talking about, can you bring that slide up, just the way you are looking at it? Is that there are other sidewalks coming off the parking lot that, you know, staff feels should be public easement, so. And I'm struggling with that as well. I, yeah, I, I get, I get that, I mean, I just, I don't have any question that the town would vacate that right away. I'd be shocked if they didn't vacate that right away in a redevelopment scenario. I don't think it would behoove us to, to not, to not, but we could, right? That, that gives us the option, that gives us the control, and he wants the control, and that's, that's the argument. So that's why we're where we are, is he wants control, and that's his prerogative passport, so that's, yeah.
Are there pedestrian easements through the sports table?
Through the sports table?
Up to the daycare center.
I'd have to look.
Sidewalks in the front, I would imagine.
Is that the, the same kind of easement we're talking about?
Yeah, that's a great question, that's fair, that's a really good, really good question. Yeah, so you can see these are the, so what we're talking about here, so this, this is a public right-of-way, he's been agreed to, this is public, he's been agreed to, the plaza space is public, all the sidewalks around. The development are, are agreed to public. It's, it's this guy here, I think it's some of these purple lines mostly that run through here, that are up for, that are in question of whether we want to provide a recommendation. Or say that we're, you know, we're not, that we want to leave it up to the board, so.
I think we need public access easements. I don't know that it needs to be a blanket easement, I don't know that it needs to allow kind of traversing everywhere, but I think there needs to be targeted locations where we need public access easements, and I think it's just best practice thing to do.
Do you want to specify where, or do you want it just everywhere Stephen is suggesting?
I think the, at the minimum, the areas that Stephen is suggesting.
So that's here, Stephen, right?
Yeah, connecting into that parking lot.
And here?
Connecting through there, and then making sure, and then making sure that retail building is adequately served for public access.
This one?
Yep.
From the parking lot, you mean?
From the parking lot.
Original suggestion was both sides of the parking lot, and then connect through mid-block on Block Six. But then also to provide, in this area, through the backsides of all of these blocks is not publicly accessible either.
And that's a tough one, because these aren't, remember, these aren't individually sold townhomes, right? That, that need a public street or public sidewalk. This is a single private owner building, right? That's, that's the difference.
That's my issue, is that the rest of the development so far has been residential properties that people are going to purchase and own privately.
Yeah, so there can't be private ownership of the walkways, right?
Right, and there are the right-of-ways and the streets. This area of town is more, much more commercial. We want it to be all commercial.
But it's privately owned, I mean, that's probably the big thing.
But it's privately owned, exactly.
It's a single owner.
Right. That's, that's where I'm leaning toward not having any easements, and allowing them to have the property the way they want it, because it's a commercial development, it's not a residential privately owned, you know, individual residence. It's commercial, it's not residential, it's two different pieces.
Mr. Whitty, what do you think?
I'm kind of with Commissioner Ritchie. I think there should be easements, at least in the, where the apartment buildings are and the parking lot on that side. Yeah, so all of that, I think, should be in. The stores on the, by the retail down there, I'm not as convinced.
Oh, back here?
Yeah, but I think up there where, and I guess my thoughts are, this is what, we want the whole town to be coming down into that area up there, and we want them to visit the retail stores too. But it just seems like if we want them there to not protect that right, to not have that right, again, no one's going to know this probably other than us sitting in this room, that, you know, hopefully it never comes to more than that. But I still don't understand, and this is what I can't get past, if we have one easement, then why is, why are five that more? And I'm not legal, so I think it is a good one to push to the town attorney and to staff to say, what is, what do other people do? I think we've asked some good questions. What are we doing elsewhere in the town, and what do other towns do?
I think it's going to be maxed everywhere you look.
Yeah, but.
But, at least, it was better than I do.
I think it's extremely common to have public access easements on commercial property. I think it's very common, and oftentimes, again, it's a blanket easement over all paved areas or all sidewalks, allowing access into these buildings. I think, I'm just referring to staff and Legal on this one.
Okay, well, you're not convinced, please.
And I'm still of the opinion that we put some type of language in to vacate that if it gets redeveloped.
Sure, I mean, if we can.
So, so that's my thought.
I lean more towards Commissioner Malia. My sense would be, what's the minimum number of easements that's needed to allow this to function? Let's stop there. I'm trying to think, who needs one? I mean, if you're a resident in one of those apartments, buildings, do you need an easement to go home? If you have a family member come visit you, do you need somebody? I mean, if you're a drunken person staggering across the parking lot, do you need an easement? I obviously don't know, but my estimation would be probably not.
I'll come back around real quick, do you, have you gotten enough, any more information? Do you have, you come to any, any further opinion?
This is, this is a tough one, you know, and I do understand the applicant's desire not to have this property shredded, you know, by easements. I do get that. I, I also am a little bit concerned about, you know, having a number of either our town residents or visitors come and be on private property. And what that would mean if police are called or legally, how that would.
Oh, they, well, we asked that, and they do have, police and fire are covered in a different manner, so. It really comes down to town easement or not.
Well, but though, does it say this person can't be here? That's what I mean by that, legal.
Well, what it says is if Bill wants to say this person can't be here, not Bill, but if Morgan Ranch wants to come back and say this person can't be here, and I'm going to put up a fence across it so people can't come in, they have the right to do that, it's their property, it's private. Why they would do that, I can't even imagine, but legally, technically, like down to the nth degree, can they do that? Can they decide that, you know what, we're not going to let anybody walk from here to here, you know, unless you have a pass from this apartment to get out of the sidewalk? Would they do that? I can't, I can't even imagine. Could they technically? It's their property, they can do what they want.
So, I mean, we have an opportunity to say that Morgan Ranch will need to work with staff further on this before moving to the board to find some alternative.
I don't think so, they, they've both come to a complete impasse, and I think that's why we're sitting here after this conversation, because it was pretty clear, there's an impasse, so.
I have one question about this, the one that goes across through the middle of the north half of Block Six.
This one?
Yeah, that one. I mean, it goes, it goes through a parking lot, I mean, how wide is it going to be? Can we make this easement five feet, ten feet?
I, oh, well, I don't know.
Does the person know whether they're in the easement or out of the easement?
Very quick.
It just follows the sidewalk, so.
Just follows the sidewalk.
You're not going to.
Come out, yeah, there'd be a sidewalk, these are all sidewalks, right? That we're talking about?
And the reason for that request is the, the bus stop is located right around this area, so if you're going to get off and you're going to be going to the MOB or anything.
You live here, and you're going to walk here and across here, and go to the bus stop, yeah.
I think you're not trespassing, so.
You solved it.
Well, I mean, it's a more, it's a more reasonable reason than I've heard before.
So do we want to try to make a recommendation, or do we want to pass on this? And, I mean, I'm, I don't know. Phyllis, do you have any, if you had to pick, if you were going to get to vote one way or the other, would you get a head nod on here? Were you more in favor of public easements, or?
Yes, I would be in favor.
More favor of public easements, yeah.
Because I think it's, it's necessary.
I don't think we should just pass it to the board and not do anything. I think we should pony up and one way or the other.
Make a recommendation?
Yeah, or, yeah, one way or the other, whatever it is. I just, I just don't think it's, it's our responsibility to do something.
Well, so, and I don't think, you know, it's, it's not a motion kind of thing, it's more of a, more of just a hand, hand, hand raise here, so I'll just, why don't we just do that real quick? Who's in favor of, of public easements? Per staff's recommendation, I guess, is probably the, the big question. And I, I've gotten, I don't want to leave a look at Bill, because I was thinking differently, but I'm kind of, I've kind of been convinced here that this is important, that, that we, that we do the public easement, so. But it just feels, it's feeling important the more I think about it, so. And then who, who was opposed? Who were the opposed, one, two? So, okay, so in general, I think we pass it along to the board. And I'm happy to say there was a five to two, you know, that there was, it wasn't, wasn't quite clear. We weren't in a hundred percent agreement, and we are, we're a little bit confused by, by what the right thing is to do here, but, so I guess even if I hadn't voted, I, we still would have passed. Darn. No, I, I, you did, I mean, you convinced me that, I mean, it's important for, for people to walk through. And as soon as you said the bus stop was there, and people were going to be walking through there, it just felt important. And if there's some clear paths there, Stephen, I guess that, you know, some that should be and some that could not be, you know, I, I mean, I'm okay with you guys figuring that out too, so, okay. All right, so I think we were, let's see, we were pretty much okay with everything that, you have, you have all the guidance you need from us, right? We.
Right, I think you just need to start, I mean, you've, you've made a motion on the PD already, so we would just need to go through the plat and the two FDPs to make motions on.
Yep, individually on each one of those, based on, and we've all come to agreement on your recommendations. I think we were all good with those, with the addition of the public access easement, which actually is in there too, so. So it's per, per staff recommendations at this point, right? Okay. All right, let's be bold and take this one, let's do the first one. The first one's the plat, so that's going to be, working from the backwards, backways, right? Mr. Malia, you can do this one. Uh, let's see, so this is the final plat. Resolution, approval of the final plat, it's starting from the back, come forward. It's this one, right?
The Town of Superior Planning Commission Resolution Number.
Six.
Six, series two thousand nineteen. A resolution of the Planning Commission of Town of Superior recommending approval of final plat for Blocks Two and Four through Eleven, Tracks A and B, and Parcels C, G, and K. In the Superior Town Center, case number FP two thousand nineteen dash five, inclusive of staff's recommendations.
So moved by Commissioner Malia, do we, I'll second that. And all in favor? That's unanimous, okay. All right, coming back to FDP. Come on, Stephen, you got, there's one, one for everybody tonight. Good practice, good practice.
Number seven?
Yep, number seven.
The Town of Superior Planning Commission Resolution Number Seven, series two thousand nineteen. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the Town of Superior recommending approval of a final development plan for segments of Creekview Way, Marshall Road, Old Railway, and Gateway Drive, and the Detention Pond within Track C One, Planning Area Two, Superior Town Center, case number FDP two thousand nineteen oh three, including staff recommendations.
So moved by Commissioner Whitty, do I have second? Second by Commissioner Stewart, all in favor? We got all opposed. And, is he permitted to abstain?
I don't know, I think he is, but no.
Yeah, but what's your, what's missing in abstaining?
I'm agreeing to abstain on the final development plan as well.
Can he do?
I, I guess you would, you would need kind of a reason to abstain, either you have to vote in favor of it or against it. So I mean, I guess if you're abstaining, then you're likely voting against it, unless you have some kind of conflict.
Yeah, the abstention would be a conflict, right?
Because there's only options to, to approve it or not.
Right, right.
Either in favor or against. Unless you had some kind of a conflict that, do you have any type of conflicts having to do with the?
You're the owner of the development of this.
Right, do you have any kind of affiliation with them or anything?
All right, so, all right, and one against, yep, all right. Six to one, okay, all right. And lastly, Mr. Stewart, you want to do this one?
Sure. This is the top one, correct?
Go ahead. Uh, front page, I think.
The Town of Superior Planning Commission Resolution Number Eight, series two thousand nineteen. I move a resolution of the Planning Commission of the Town of Superior recommending approval of final development plans for Blocks Four, Six, Seven, Nine, Ten, and Eleven, and Parcel K, Downtown Plaza and Promenade, Superior Town Center, case number FP two thousand nineteen dash zero four.
Inclusive of staff recommendations?
Inclusive of staff recommendations.
All right, so moved by Commissioner Stewart, do we have a second? By Commissioner Whitty, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, got all that, all right. All right, thank you, gentlemen. I think that's, that's it for these. We'll move on to staff announcements, and, or we can go home, it's late. We'll move on to staff announcements, and, or we can go home, it's late. Phyllis wanted that here at nine, that was not successful. I would've loved to have gotten there too. It's a late night last night.
Almost the same tonight.
Yes, exactly.
We'll have, uh, um, this, this, uh, agenda item goes to the Town Board on the twelfth of December, so the Town Board will consider it then. Uh, the ninth, excuse me, um, twelve-nine, exactly. Uh, and then, uh, I, I guess I'll follow up with you guys this whether or not you guys wanna meet before the end of the year. Uh, we will, we were thinking we were gonna have a Verizon Wireless cell request, and that's not gonna come in until January now. Um, so we were gonna schedule your discussion about your work plan, um, with that, and typically we like to do that before the end of the year, but it may not, I mean, we may be able to just wait till January, but if you guys have a, a strong preference to do it before the end of the year, we can do that too.
I'm not available on the twelfth. Is, no, what's our next regular meeting, what's our meeting?
I think the third?
The third?
Yeah.
I don't think I'm available on the third.
Well, I can send a follow-up email, and we can figure out whether or not, I mean, the seventeenth, I guess, is the next one after that, but, uh...
Holidays, so...
It gets close, yeah, so, I think we could probably push it to January, we've pushed it before to January, but we wanna hammer it out in one meeting probably, if we push it that far, so.
Yeah, third and seventeenth.
That's it?
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, we're turned.